All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. This Monday, May 6th meeting, and I would like to ask everyone to join us in a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation, if you would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. God, we thank you for another day, another opportunity to serve in this capacity. Thank you for calling us to this place of service, Lord. We just pray that you would watch over us now throughout this meeting and lead, guide, and direct us, and we thank you for the people that's come tonight, and just pray that we could do justice to the agenda and be fair and equitable in each and every situation. Thank you for all those that serve this county. Lord, thank you for your grace and your mercy. Christ's name I pray. Amen. All right, at this time, we have no additions or subtractions to our agenda. We do have a name change under Spotlight Business, I understand, but outside of that would entertain a motion.
No move.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Five oh. All right, there is in your packet minutes from 4:15 and 4:22 meetings. Any concerns regarding those? If not, would there be a motion of approval?
No move.
Motion and a second. All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Five oh. And would thank our clerk. I think she is out of pocket for training, so. At this time, we have the responsibility of calling a public hearing for the purposes of borrowing some money for capital improvements, and those improvements consist of several items, and I would like to lean on Mike just a little bit to run through the list. BDC College building up there is getting some work, another building.
Yes, there are four buildings being addressed. Of course, we're going to build a new Council on Aging building. We're going to renovate the current rock building, the current Council on Aging building for court use. The BDC Community College building, paving the parking lot, a foundation repair, roof repairs and HVAC upgrades, and then at 90 South Main, there's some foundation repair as well. And hopefully, we can do all this for about, it's a $900,000 loan we are projecting to borrow. So you have a kind of an estimated budget here. Some of these things have been bid, some of them have not, because they're, it's timeline, because we want to do the, obviously, the new Council on Aging building will need to be constructed before the old one will be renovated for the courts. So hopefully, we'll have the old building, finish the Council on Aging building this fall, move them December, something like that, and then it gives us a few weeks to renovate the old building before March Circuit or Superior Court session. Keep calling it Circuit, that's the Virginia term. So in order to borrow money for real estate activity, we are required to conduct a public hearing. That's one of the requirements that the local government commission will look to, and so that's what we're here for tonight, so.
I would like to state for the public, the Council on Aging, and in case you're not aware, as Mike stated, we will be utilizing their current location for the downstairs courtroom concerns that the judges are having to address that situation, which will displace them, and we are in conversations currently with the wellness center, so the new building at this time is planned to be on their campus over there, so just for the public's input. Do we have terms on this loan yet? Or?
It's a 10-year loan, 3.09% interest rate from BB&amp;T, and the annual payment is about $110,000 for 10 years.
I think that covers everything. So at this time, we'll go ahead and call a public hearing, and if anybody would like to speak to this matter, feel free to come and do so. All righty, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I think that's all the action we really need at this point. Okay.
There's a resolution for this loan that's under general business, but that's right now.
Right, a reimbursement resolution. Okay. All right, we'll move along to item B, which is Spotlight Business. We have Katie and I think another familiar face, Mr. Miller, Greg Miller. Welcome, Katie.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I want to thank you for having us today. I wanted to give you a little chamber update, and then I'll introduce our chamber business spotlight. We have a new member, Mitchell River Endeavors. They do vinyl and screen printing, and they made the aprons for empty bowls this year. It's a new business here in Allegheny County, and they recently joined. I just would like to invite everyone to our Business After Hours this month. It's Thursday, May 16th, at Chili Water Farm. The Chamber is hosting a silent auction for Take Flight Scholarship Project. I have a short video that our intern Caleb Osborne put together with details about the auction. The auction will be held at the Farmer's Market on May the 18th. It's from 9:30 to 11:30, and all proceeds go to scholarships for the Allegheny Education Foundation, so I invite all of you to come. We had a great turnout at the Farmer's Market at opening week, and I hope that in a couple weeks we'll have more, but thank you, Caleb, for putting that together. I'd like to take this moment to introduce Greg Miller, the broker in charge and owner of Allegheny County Realty.
So Friday evening, with Deborah Jean and I were in office doing a little bit of work, and I get a phone call, and Katie's on the other line, and she says, Deborah Jean hollers back to me, she said, "Would you like to go talk to the county commissioners?" I said, "Sure, what do they want to talk about?" So that's how I've gotten here. That was Friday evening. So my name is Greg Miller. I'm a lifelong resident of Allegheny County. My family has been here since before Allegheny County was, back in 1700s. I've got a lot of history here, and I've got a lot of love for this place. This truly is my home, and I wake up in a vacation spot every day. So I have three sons. Allegheny has afforded me the ability to raise three young men. Two of them are still here in the county. One's a contractor, one is employed at Allegheny Hospital, and the third one is yet still undecided. He wants to be a policeman and has just graduated from the academy in Greensboro. My business is Allegheny High Country Realty. I've had my license since 2012, and Allegheny High Country Realty come into existence on March the 1st, 2017. So every viable business has to produce something or has to offer a service. My business is a service-oriented business. We put people together. Every business and every person in order to be successful and viable has to have a why. As I'm trying to teach new agents, that's the first thing I set them down and I tell them, I say, "Listen, before I can teach you anything, before we can go forward here, I have to know what is your why? Your why will get you up in the mornings, on the mornings you don't want to. Your why will also give you a direction." I had the fortunate, fortunate to be in a class with Arnie Altmas. He was a professor at NC State, and we were having a discussion about businesses, and he said that most businesses, matter of fact, just a lot of things in general, you can boil them down to two things. There is a reason for it and the excuse, and our conversation that day was on farming. The reason for the farming was the land, the farming was the excuse for it. And so in my business, advertising and peaceful relationships is my reason. Real estate is the excuse for it. So what is my why? That's one of the things I want to try to get, you know, let you all know what is. Leaving a legacy, I think, in broad strokes is one of the reasons. That is my why. Not only to leave a legacy, but to be a good steward of what has been given to me, what has been entrusted with me. And that's not necessarily all materialistic things. I think in life, we are given the responsibility and good stewards of some of the knowledge that we've been given, and to pass this knowledge on so it'll help someone else. And so just a few of the influences that have been with me in this county and in my life, the Smith brothers, to give you a friend instance, Tom and Jim, very early on. Those two men had the ability to instill in me a sense of fairness, a sense of competitiveness, and the will not to quit. There's a few other people in this county that has been a big influence on me. Jackie Billings, Hometown Fuel's been an influence on me. Jackie gave me the sense of work ethic and the excellence of work. Always do your best and don't turn it out until it is excellent. One of the truisms that he gave to me, one of these little sayings that I go back to daily, is every dollar you'll ever get comes from somebody else. And what he was trying to tell me was that you have to cooperate. Dean Milliken, I'm sure a lot of y'all remember Dean. He was a property owner here in town, and he was associated with Thomas Brothers Hams. Dean was instilled in me that you cannot do enough by yourself. You have to have help. One person working 40 hours a week cannot produce enough to make a difference in a meaningful way. And what he was trying to pass on to me was, you have to dig in and get a little bit more. There was another gentleman in the county that's been a huge influence on me, and it would take me hours to tell you what I've learned from this man. His name's Tommy Andrews, and the thing that Tommy taught me that I use every day is sometimes when the best you can do is nothing, you just need to go on to the next one. So providing a service puts people together, and that's what we do as Realtors. Realtors are held to a higher standard, or a high standard, and we're called to be experts in our field. And to take that another step forward, in 2019, this year, 98% of all content that we see every day, all content that we are giving, is given to us in a video form. I have one full-time employee. Her name is, I call her DJ, Deborah Jean, and she's, is our advertising and media. She takes care of our community projects. Some of the things that she's done here in the last little bits, we've sponsored a soccer team. And she also did our Easter egg hunt. Partnered with the Chamber of Commerce and had an Easter egg hunt in the park. We had, I think, over 75 kids come to that. That was a huge success. And this is something that she's putting together. It's a community appreciation sponsored by Allegheny High Country Realty. All of y'all will get an invitation to come to this. It'll be barbecued chicken and beans and slaw, and maybe some fun and some games. So another truism that I've learned over the years is if you can't measure it, you can't manage it. And so Deborah Jean's got some numbers of what 2018 was and what we're, where we're going in 2019. Allegheny High Country Realty, with the help of two part-time agents, we closed a little over $6 million worth of property in, in 2018, and we're headed towards that. Hopefully, we'll do just a little bit more than that this year. Currently on market in Allegheny County, we have 165 homes from 75,000 to 995,000. 279 pieces of land are on the market, from a half an acre to a little over 200, the 200 being just marketed at a little over $1 million. In 2018, there were 133 homes that were sold, an average of 178,000. 51 pieces of land at 68,000, the average of that. So why do people come to Allegheny County? They come for the, for a lot of reasons, and every, and it'll be as many reasons as the people that are, that come. But our natural beauty, our climate, our rivers, our views, and most importantly, the people that are here. So nationally, 25% of our nation's economy is tied to housing in one way or another. The fastest way to promote, or fastest way to build our tax base in Allegheny County and improve our economic situation is through housing. We have a lot of natural that is here. We already have it. We just need to promote it. So I would encourage everybody, commissioners, the town, our citizens, to pick a direction. Let's just pick a direction and go. Everybody pull together, work together, and let's leave Allegheny County a better place than we found it. Not that it's not beautiful now, but let's always try to strive to leave things better than we found them. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Good presentation. Katie, before you go, the after-hours, is that May the 16th?
Yeah, the 16th.
At Chili Water Farm?
Chili Water Farm.
Okay, thanks.
From 5 until 7.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Public agenda comments. Anybody here would like to address any of the agenda items for public comment on them? Now would be a good time to come and share. Seen no movement. We'll move along to D, presentations. Have, I think I've seen him come in, Mr. Brown. Going swimming, I think, or something. High diving, swimming, hiking, camping, all, everything.
All the above.
You got it covered, ain't ya?
Yeah.
Disc golf?
Disc golf, yeah. One thing I do want to share with you before I get started with the presentation, we just ended our coaches pitch tee ball registration online. We have five through 12-year-old kids, boys and girls, 160 registrants. So five years old all the way to 12-year-old, we have 56 coaches pitch registrants this year. So that's the most I've seen in the six years that I've been here. So I'm, I'm very glad. I don't know if it's because of the online registration, but I do know that a lot of it had to do with Allegheny Cares sponsoring our nine through 12-year-olds. It really got people interested. They, they got the $25, paid for them so they could, some people may not be able to pay for it, so they got to play. But 160 kids, boys and girls, are playing softball, baseball this year. So I just wanted to let you know that right off. So my presentation to the board, I'm not asking for any action right now, but I do wanted to give this to you. I've got two different quotes from two, two different vendors. The first quote is from In the Swim. In the Swim is a company that I deal with a lot, buying chemicals, buying any kind of item for the pool, chairs, skimmer baskets, anything like that. And then the next company is called the Pool Supply Superstore. And, and I've got both prices there. I've never dealt with the Pool Supply Superstore, so I don't know about their shipping or anything like that. But I do have two prices there for you to see, and they're very, very reasonable. They're, they're 18 for, for both slides. So you've got, and they're exactly the same, so I made sure to go apples for apples. I didn't go apples for oranges. But the two slides, you've got a twirly one that's made by Vortex, the blue one on the, right there. All right? So that can hold up to 350-pound person going down that slide. Okay? So that, that's more for our older people that, that come to the pool, may have some adults, but more, more or less, some of our bigger high school kids that, that come to the pool, enjoy the water. And then the beige one is for our little ones. So we're looking there. I think it holds 175 pounds. Just maybe have it in a three-foot section, three-foot area. That way, the, the little ones can have something to do, rather than always just jumping off. They can't dive. There is no diving, even in eight foot. We, we have signs that you can't dive at the eight-foot section. So we're just wanting to kind of spice things up a little bit for the, for the kids during the summer. And shoot, if that thing holds 350 pounds, I may jump on it a couple of times on a hot day, so.
You didn't get enough water on Friday?
Yeah, I got enough water on Friday. But I just wanted to let, let y'all know that, that this is, this is kind of what we're looking at to maybe spice up the pool a little bit, to, to help with the, kind of getting people to come instead of going to Grayson County. I mean, that's my main goal, I think, is to, to get more people to stay in the county rather than go out, out of the county. Any questions from the members?
Have you got any parents' input on this?
I have not. But I'm sure that anything that is going to spice up the, the area there is going to be able to, to be a good thing for the, for the parents. Now, I have heard about the salt system, and I've, I've gotten emails saying that they're very excited that we're going to go to the salt system and that we are going to keep the pool open. So I have had feedback from that. So they're very excited that we're going to keep the pool open.
At one time, we used to have a diving board or...
We used to have two diving boards, yeah.
And why did we deal away with those?
I'm, I'm not 100% sure, but insurance is a big thing. We, we just didn't want to do, get a bigger deductible or a bigger premium with having the, the diving boards. But also in 2007, 2008, we renovated the pool. And, and this was one of the main reasons that the high dive went away, is because we went from 12 feet deep to eight feet deep. And, and with eight feet, you can't really have any diving boards whatsoever. So they, they kind of got rid of both of them.
Now, Independence has diving boards.
Correct.
Is there a liability problem with diving boards or...
It is a liability, but you can insure over anything for a price.
And same with these, there, there could be some liability.
A whole lot less.
With anything.
With anything, but a lot less with this than there would be with diving boards.
Now, were the, the slides, when, when you put out your request for recommendation for the pool, how many of them replied back with the, with the slides?
Nobody really specifically said slide. They, they really, everybody, a lot of the majority of it said renovation or improvement of the Duncan Recreation Center. So I think anything from updating the bathrooms, to the chlorinators, to putting slides, and then I think the major thing would be a splash pad. That would be, to me, improvements to Duncan Recreation Center.
The, the splash pad, wasn't it the most requested?
It was number two. It was number two, right after improvements of Duncan Rec.
That's all? Anybody else?
How's the, the chairs and the tables, the facilities for the moms and dads and the grandmas and grandpas? Is any of that available up there to, for them to sit on or?
Yeah, we have all of our chairs. We bought, I've, I've, each year, I've tried, I've kind of upgraded and gotten newer ones. So last year was my last year that we bought and got rid of the older ones. So we've got all new lounge chairs that are there, and I think there's, there's 18 or 22 of them.
Is that adequate most days?
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're, I usually have one or two that are, that are free every day.
On your, on your enrollment and your turnout, I think, I think there's a couple of things. One is, I don't think many of them get to see quite the beard that you've got anywhere else. So you're sporting a good beard. But also, I, I just want to pat you on the back. I think you bring a lot of passion, a lot of leadership, and I, I really think you've, you've done a lot of good. And so a lot of it is, is directly responsible, I think, for the leadership there. So appreciate you.
Do you have the infrastructure to support these numbers, or if they continue to rise? When are we starting to look at that?
Do we have enough coaches and things like that? It, it's always hard for us to get coaches, because they're on a volunteer basis. Most of the time, it's mom and daddy. But I think that right now, as it is, we have adequate, because we do share a, a field with the high school. Lady Trojan, the softball field is, is very, we, we hand in hand share that field tremendously with each other and take care of it. So if, if they sometimes will want me to mow it and they don't have time, I'm very happy to go up and mow it. If they're a little short on some fertilizer, I'm very happy about throwing a little money into, into helping fertilize, because we utilize that field tremendously for our softball girls and our nine and 10-year-old baseball, because the bases are perfect, 60 feet.
I was mainly concerned that you've got the fields. The parents I can't influence, but if you've got enough fields for right now, you need to let us know whenever it starts to be a stretch. And I'm sure you're purchasing the fertilizer locally.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do either one of these have water that's poured on them?
The big one. The blue one does have, and it's rated at 35 gallons a minute. And then you can actually tap into it, and they, it's got a way you can tap right straight into the system to where it's basically flowing off the slide back into the water and then being regulated and sanitized through the system.
Good.
Would you all pump, pump that up, or is that got a separate pump for, for that?
It'll have a separate pump to it.
The other one quoted does not have that capability.
This one.
No, from the other company.
No, they, remember, they're apples for apples.
Both quotes are for two slides, a, a large version and a kitty version.
And they're, and I made sure that they were exactly the same, apples to apples. I didn't want to have to go and explain one. I just, I wanted to get the two products exactly the same.
Wonder how long it takes me if the board decides to do something like that? Would that be doable for this season coming up?
Absolutely. I just got a, actually, I got, I got here a little early. I called my guy, my pool expert, he, he's in Dobson, his name's Terry Haymore, and he said that we could definitely probably get it in in a week. So, and, and we can always maybe shut it down for a day or two. I'd hate to do that if it's nice and pretty weather. But we're getting a little close to, to the June startup time. But we're going to try to, if, if the board was to take action, we would love to try to push our, the envelope as hard as we can to try to get that in before we actually get started.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should poll the members to see if they'd like to take action tonight on this.
And before you do, Terry did tell me, and I, I wanted to tell you this, he said, for both slides, he said probably $1,000 labor to put them in.
So we're, I can't see that number.
18,500.
18,500. About $20,000 each.
Does it come out of the Beamer money?
Well, that's kind of the reason I'm looking back this way. It's, I mean, it's up to us where it comes from, but...
That would be the, if, if we're going to do it, that would be the preferred method from the Outdoor Recreation Fund.
It's guidelines of the bequeathment.
It does. Larry, you had a question?
Is that 20,000 each, right?
Uh, it's 20,000 per the two different slides. So this one's...
That gets both.
Yeah. So that one's around $1,200, and then the bigger one is 17,000. And both quotes, the In the Swim was that quote, and then this quote here is 18,530. So you'd add $1,000, so 19,500.
Okay. So one, one was how much? What was the total?
The In the Swim totals 18,34998.
With $1,000 labeled, so it is the lowest bid by about $150, correct?
And In the Swim is a company we, as Jim mentioned, we deal with regularly. The other company, they're probably fine, we just don't know them.
Yeah, well, I, I just, they were the only other company that had both slides that I could go apples to apples with.
What's the total, Jim?
19, 19,34998.
What?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
I would second and a motion to proceed with the lower of the two bids. Comment?
Is this to come out of the Beamer money?
That's the preferred method, and if y'all decide that...
To the intention of your motion?
That's the motion.
Yeah.
I think it's a step very, in the right direction to tip our, upgrade our pool and give the kids a little more activity, just jump in there and get wet. I think it's a good thing.
Will that bring our balance down too, if we get this?
About 180.
About 180, yeah. 178, 179.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion, all in favor of that, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Bye-bye. Is that soon enough?
I'd say.
You're welcome.
I'd say a better thing.
Now, while you're here, I think we've...
Absolutely. You, I've got one more thing. The next thing is our, our fairgrounds, our Higgins Agricultural Center use policy. Right now, we have our camper hookups at $10 a day. Right now, with the improvements out there, we're, we're kind of the equivalent of some of the, the campgrounds in, in around. Now, I'm not comparing to us, to, to anyone, don't, don't take it that way, but we're wanting to kind of bump that up to $25 a day. I've done a little research. New River is $29 a day, and then if, that's for two people. If you have anybody above six years old, it's $7 more per person. So we could actually really partner with them, especially during their high times, to kind of get their overflow to come to the fairgrounds. Now, and make sure that we, we're not overbooking, because we do have events that are coming up during our summer months. The whole month of July is booked, and we, we don't want to overbook. So anytime that we have the ability to kind of take some from them, we're going to try to... to look and see if we can show that, look, we're still going to try to get them to go and do some tours and stuff with them and do some floats with them, but they're going to be a little bit farther away. So we did upgrade the 21 side of the fairgrounds camper hookups with 30 brand-new hookups. They, all 30 have a 30 amp, a 110 amp, and have water. And of course, they have the ability to go over to our dump station next to the concession stand and get rid of their waste.
Are they going to have access to the bathrooms?
Yes.
How are you going to control access?
We will give keys. Once, once they come and rent, they will get a key that will get them into the bathrooms.
Are you going to have a deposit on the key?
Yes.
In case they drive off?
We want to, to put in a motion, a $25 refundable if everything's good to go. Now, that's, that's the saying, that we go and make sure everything's good to go. And then we get back our key and our everything, and then they get their $25 back.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
Yes, I've got some questions. We've revamped this, but I noticed we haven't made any changes on our concession, concession stand.
And I was going to bring that up, so.
Spartolines Club is no longer taking it.
No longer taking the concession stand, so.
Do we have anybody lined up?
We do have Laurel Springs Volunteer Fire Department's auxiliary members that are wanting to take over the concession stand.
We haven't finalized the contract on that.
Yeah, the MOU still.
This will come back to you in a, probably a month for some more changes.
So we're going to revise this again.
Yes.
And bring it back to the board. Thank you.
How many total camper hookups is it? You said you had 30 new ones?
Terry, do you know?
60-some, I think, isn't it? 65, 68, something like that.
How many spots do you have during the Fiddler's Convention? 110 or 120?
Oh, really?
So during the Fiddler's Convention, they have the ability of, of having 115, 120? 115, 120 spots that they rent out. Now, some of them are primitive, correct? Some of them are primitive, but a lot of them, if you go by the Fiddler's Convention, a lot and majority of it is RVs or campers. So they have the ability to, to hook up even in the big field, and then they've got the upgraded on the 21 side of it.
Whenever, what's the county's cut on that one? During the Fiddler's Convention? We just get to $500, and if it's over a thousand?
If it's over 1,000 people that come through their gates, $1,000.
So they are gain, they are getting the money for the campsites?
Correct.
I have no problems with that.
None, I don't either.
I think you're on the right road of partnering with some of the other campgrounds and advertise that thing. There's one less in Piney Creek this year, River Camp, I understand. So I think that could be a profitable fund.
We're not quite ready to be maxed out every single weekend, and we're going to, you know, well, this will be an experience. We'll figure out what, what our limits are this summer before we go wide open with it, you know?
So we need to probably look for a motion on this change, this $25 per day rate.
Make the motion, approve the $25 a day rate.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Five of them, I presume. That gets you?
You hit the lottery, didn't you?
I did.
Wait a minute, I've got a question.
Jim, Jim, I've got one question here.
I've, I've, I missed out on something, but with the concession, who is running the concessions now?
Laurel Springs Auxiliary will be running the, the concessions. Once we get our MOU and everything figured out with them.
We don't have everything signed just yet, but it's going to be Laurel Springs Auxiliary.
The Lions Club is, is out of the.
Yeah, they relinquished it.
They're out of the concession business.
Yes, sir.
So you have to make a few changes?
Correct. I will come back and, like Mike said, in about a month or so with these changes finalized and in, in front of y'all to you, for your approval.
Okay. And I notice you had $8 an hour to clean up, then you change it, you got $10.
Correct.
You got somebody that work for $10 an hour?
He's wanting.
Besides me?
That's if, if we get it. Now, a lot of the vendors in Ugly Creek and Sparta, they hire a lady and they pay them their own, their own wage. Now, if we was to hire somebody with the fairgrounds, then that's what our rate is, is $8 an hour.
Okay, I mean, as long as you've got it covered.
Is there anybody hired to take care of the bathroom, the men's and the women's during events to keep it clean and keep it, keep it, the products in there and?
They are, but I know that me and you had this conversation, and I, and I think when I come back with the concession stuff, that I think that we need to figure a way, a way of putting that black and white in our use policy to be able to make sure that we do have that ability to enforce that, which the, the, the event holders have been amazing about getting those, that one person to come in and clean and do all that stuff. But who knows that she may just up and quit? We don't know, so.
I understand. She's got some health challenges also.
Well, I think putting that black and white, that the event holder needs to have some kind of custodial there, it would be, would be great. That way, it's black and white on a piece of paper.
If we have, if they can't.
If they can't, then, then we would.
Establish a fee for that.
Correct.
Find the services, yeah.
And one last question. At one time, we'd talked about taking those stalls down that are down by the creek.
Correct.
The ones where the roofs are falling in.
And, and I think that we, we've decided not to do that now because that's where we store, and I, during our retreat that we had, and we were deciding that, it just skipped my mind that we have a lot of storage facility, ability in those to where we store all of our trash cans. And I found out that if we keep our trash cans out, there, there's some people that come and just dump their trash in those blue, blue barrels. So we make sure that after each event, the blue barrels are put back into those horse stalls.
So you're going to have to redo the roof?
We're going to have to redo some stuff, put some money into it. And we've actually talked to Soil and Water, and we're actually maybe looking into making some of the stalls a little bit bigger to be able to put their grass cedar in there.
But taking one of the middle?
Right. Just making it bigger, maybe taking one, one section out, making it bigger. That way, they have the ability to put that, that seed, seed driller under roof.
You've roughly got, what, 20 stalls right now? 10 in the front and 10 in the back?
Correct.
Two of them have stuff in them, some gates or something like that. Then the rest of them just.
White fencing. A lot of them, a lot of them are open, so we could utilize that for storage for anything.
Well, a lot of them just have junk in them.
True.
Old rotten barrels or rotten wood. You're going to clean all that out?
Clean that out. We're going to try to clean that out and try to utilize that a little bit better, but not tear it down.
You plan on using prisoners from the jail?
I'd love to.
Have you talked to the sheriff about it?
I could definitely do that.
Right, and let's do it. Let's get something out of them anyway.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome. Thank y'all.
Next on the agenda, we have Karen with the, our finance officer, with a couple of items. And I think Josh may be up on the second one, I'm not sure.
He is.
Welcome.
The first one I want to talk about is, as you can see, I'm not going to bore you with all the details that the auditor sent out in her one-page summary. But as you can see, just a couple of days after you all approved the audit contract for this year, the state auditor sent out an updated version that they are not going to need the separate agreed-upon procedures that is, had already included in our budget request. But now it's going to be included back in our regular main audit, which is the way it's always been prior to the last two couple of years. So this is just to amend the contract because they have to send it to the LGC, the Local Government Commission, to show that they are incorporating the Medicaid testing in the main audit. Like I said, as they did a couple of years ago. So these numbers, you can see on the second page, the main change is the base fee went from 12,250 to 19,250. And that is because now they are going to have to test more major programs to make sure we're staying in compliance with the percentage that we're required to have tested each year. And it's a dollar threshold that they look for there. So that's pretty well the, my first topic in a nutshell. Do y'all have any questions on that?
Need action?
Yes. This requires board action with a contract amendment.
Make a motion to approve.
And we're pretty much don't have an option. I mean, and, and this audit service, services from this company were a very good experience, so.
Yes, excellent experience.
And the same thing would be required from any.
Correct.
New company we tried to go out and solicit pricing from.
That is correct.
Okay. We do, did have a motion, I think, and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Five of them.
In the next conversation, Josh is going to come up and join me here on this one as well. So for the past several months, Josh Green, Maintenance, Public Works Director, myself, have been discussing purchasing and ways to scale back purchasing countywide, not just for the finance at our office, not just for maintenance, but we're just kind of looking at everything holistically. And one of the things that Josh has done, you know, is incorporating the maintenance garage and like bulk ordering when for, you know, the oil and things like that. So in, in our conversations, we have took it a step further in looking at the possibility of incorporating a, a purchasing agent, purchasing, it won't be a complete department. We've been talking with an individual that's already employed, who has an interest in working on this with us. And Josh and I just wanted to throw the concept out to you all tonight, let you all know that we are continuing to work on it. And hopefully at the next meeting, or if not that one, the following one, the first one in June, we'll have some policies for you all to review. This is something that we thought the timing would be really good to have it started, like maybe by the July of the 1st. And a couple of things that we're looking at, and Josh, you add anything, anytime you'd like to, is that, you know, for an example, the ink pen I'm standing here holding, you know, you can buy ink pens anywhere from, you know, 75 cents ink pen to $4 an ink pen. So one of the.
Get them from hotels whenever you want.
Yes, get them from hotels. That's exactly right. We use them too. We, we're looking at like bulk purchasing even for the office supplies and things like that because the more you buy of one thing, the cheaper obviously you can get it. And then our initial thought process is like when we run out of pens in the finance office, we'll put like a work order in with facility dudes and then let them know, hey, we need blue ink pens. And then we'll go pull them from their stock that they already have and then bring them to us. And that's kind of our, just our initial thought process. We welcome any feedback from any of you all.
This, this potential employee that you've talked to has, I think, some previous experience with, with previous jobs that he's held that would allow him the abilities to, to work in this area, I think, fairly comfortable, get up to speed pretty well.
This would be a collateral duty, an additional duty?
Yes, it'll be added to the, the job description. It's already there for this employee.
Not a total one position.
You know, it, it comes down to, if something as small as an ink pen to, you know, size of a vehicle. Sat down the other day, everyone here knows, we just got in our new facility up there and doing everything we can to do for the citizens of Allegheny County by the end of the year, of course. And that's saving money. And buying in bulk is the only way to go, obviously. We now have 15 different types of vehicles in our little organization that we have to buy different oil filters for, oil, and so on and so forth. So that's just something simple. You know, buying bulk obviously gives you the option to go to someone, a business, look, you've got my business, you're going to have to give me the best pricing you can. But stay with good product, too. I'm not saying go, you know, short on the product. Just, I, I think it could show tremendously, and I, I think at the end of this year, our facility, our shop up there is going to show what I'm talking about on the savings that's came through for Allegheny County this year.
I think that another area of impact is as you get towards the end of the year, and different departments may be looking at their budgets and their available monies unspent. Sometimes they may say, well, let's, let's, let's go ahead and turn loose some of those dollars because we want to start again here. Well, this is a way we could control that better through one department or one person and, and kind of manage that throughout the year. I mean, if the need is there, then okay, but let's don't spend it because we're getting to the end of the, we're having too much money at the end of the month. Most people have the reverse of that, too much month at the end of the money. So we can kind of manage that, I think, potentially. That's, I think that's another area of concern that, that I have.
Correct. And one of the ways that I have also tried to help that situation this year as well is I have cut off all ordering of everything as of May the 15th. It has to be an emergency, has to be approved by me before you order it. Or if it's going to be something regular like our telephone bill, something that's standard that comes automatically. So I'm hoping that's going to help curtail some of that because I'm not seeing a ton of invoices come in right now. People rushing to order, and I've only had like two departments email me saying, well, okay, well, yes, we won't order like massive supplies or something like that, but we will have to order X, you know, on the 10.
For the need, but just let it go with that.
Right.
Which then in turn will help you to be able to reconcile and get all of your documents in closer to the end of the year so that you're not.
Correct.
Getting them drug out for another couple of months afterwards. There will still be a few, but it'll be a lot less.
That's, that's another reason that I did, and that's what I explained to the departments too, is like last year, we had invoices coming in in September for the previous budget year, which makes that very difficult on the finance office, especially when you got the auditors coming like in two weeks. You know, so that made it very difficult. And, you know, we can't be putting invoices in three months after the beginning of the fiscal year. That was just too difficult.
Want to talk to the town too? Because there may be an interest there in consolidating some purchasing other than pipes and stuff that they can't consolidate, but office supplies should be, give us more leverage.
Any other comments? I like the sounds of it.
If it saves money.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to spend $20,000 to save a couple.
Remember what the Lord gives, the Lord can take with the way.
Right. And we will have some exemptions that will have to apply because, you know, like in this scenario, of course, we're going to have like our foster care payments, you know, things like that, that's out of our control, you know, that will be exempt. One of the other things will be exempt is like the amount of, the type of drugs that EMS has to purchase because they have to have their DEA license and stuff like that. Things like that, that we will exempt those, and, and so it's not just going to be blanket across the board for everything.
I think the, I think the concept is good. I think probably need to put a little more thought into it. I, I'd like to, you know, analyze it a little bit more critically as to where and what the savings potential really might look like, and what areas could we save the most? And, you know, just, just do a little bit deeper dive into it. That's me personally, I'm not speaking for the whole board, my thoughts. So I know you're just kind of hitting the surface of it tonight, so maybe others can give feedback or we can communicate as we move along and see how it goes. But we'll be at the end of the year here pretty quick.
Yes, we will. Blink twice, and we'll be there.
Of course, we got this baby to go through before we get there, so it may be a while.
Yep. We just wanted to throw this out tonight to see if there was interest, because there wasn't any interest, and Josh and I wasn't going to spend any more.
Always interesting, saving money.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, we're moving along pretty nicely on our time. General business, item number one is our, we did have an offer, an unsolicited offer. We rolled it out and had a few upsets on it, and it ended up finishing, and we have a conversation to have, what do y'all want to do with it? Any questions? Everybody know where we are. I think our end up, end. Everybody know where we are, I think our end, end, end offer is, the high bid was sixty-five two. We can, our options are, is we can not accept it and do anything, or we can accept it and wish her the best.
I'm in favor of accepting it.
Okay.
I'm in favor of accepting it, but it's turned into a money pit for us, and it's not generating any tax revenue at, for, right now.
Any other?
How much tax revenue are we losing on that thing? What's it worth?
Well, the tax value is two oh seven right now, so if it, it would be twelve hundred dollars roughly annually in taxes. Now, Heather does all the improvements she planned, we'll probably, I'll get Teresa out there, and we'll see if we can up that a little bit when revaluation comes around here next year, so.
But if Teresa went out there, if revaluation was now and she went out there, I'm pretty sure it would-
Would be below the, well below the two oh seven, yeah. Yeah, really, our options are, I mean, doing nothing completely is not really an option. We have not been maintaining the property. We're doing a disservice to a taxpayer. If we want to keep it, that's fine, but we'll need to think about appropriating some money for some repairs. I mean, we can't-
Some money?
We can't let the roof continue to leak, you know, forever, if we're going to keep the, the building. So, we just want to keep that, we can't move it, we can't move an agency in there tomorrow. You know, we've, we've got a lot of repairs that need to be made, so.
Is there any other ideas of, that we can use it for? Any other thoughts?
Good little facility for a call center, something along those lines. I mean, that's a good structurally sound building, it's just been neglected at, and they left to have roofwork done on it, but I, that ain't a lot of money. It costs you a quarter million dollars or better to build that building, just like it is, at today's prices. And to me, that's just, it's worth as much to us as it is to anybody. That's my thoughts, but.
Type of call center you've mentioned, I mean, what-
Well, I just say that if, you know, that we've got a couple here in the county and little call centers, that building would be, could be divided up and, and put into space for something like that, pretty, pretty easy. If that ever took place, I'm just talking there.
That would be like a private investment, wouldn't it? I mean, we, it wouldn't be a county, county-
Could be, could be. I guess the county don't want to get into leasing.
Somebody would maybe come and buy it, and then invest in it and use it for, if it's not a call center, I mean, you know, if they, if, if it, if there was somebody out there looking to open a call center, they could have come in and made an offer on it.
Not least on another time.
Well.
I just think it's cheap myself, personally.
Bobby?
I think with our budget coming up, with the different departments we have, at least for five or six months, we ought to hold off on any kind of offer. You've got a prime piece of real estate sitting on Main Street. Now, with streetscape coming, it's supposed to increase the value of everybody on Main Street. I mean, the, the price of sixty-five thousand, in my mind, is extremely low. It's, it's a good offer for you, but I, I'm looking out for the citizens of the county, and, you know, if, if we can hold off on doing this till at least the budget's over, we get through the rest of this year, you know, we may have another unsolicited offer for a lot more value. I, I'm just not in favor of letting it go at that low of a price.
That's really our last property that could be sold, right? The last thing, it's-
We can sell this building.
Move everybody out.
That makes us an unsolicited offer on this building, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
All right, how, how big do you want to grow?
You know, putting it back on the tax books, that whatever we're going to get, five, six, seven hundred a year, would take thirty or forty years just to get back what we're selling it for. So, you know, it's, I'd rather hold on to.
Anybody know how we acquired that building?
It's purchased from Arnold Young in two thousand and four for two hundred and seven thousand dollars, according to some information that I have. Now, we still, one thing that I've got to fall back on is the estimate from Hampton Randall Associates that I've got here. Post office is currently unoccupied, and then the entire building may be used to relocate the court facilities. But, currently inaccessible to the handicap, so before we rent it, we're going to have to make it handicap accessible. The entire building will need to be brought up to current building codes. It's not under current building codes. Good probability that asbestos will be present, so we'll, we'll have to abate the asbestos. Heather, do you sure you, do you want to pull your offer now? Exterior work will be required to provide accessible main entrance and exits from the building. There is no handy, no handicapped accessible toilet rooms, so new toilet rooms will need to be provided. And it is anticipated that new mechanical and electrical systems will be required. Yes, the building is there, it is sitting unoccupied. If we are going to try and bring it in, and if we want to get the fair market value, or a higher market value, we're going to have to invest in it. So, we can invest two hundred thousand dollars and sell it for two hundred and seven. I'm in favor of go ahead and moving the property, because for us to put it on the market or make it, bring it to the point where we could rent it, or, it's, it's going to be expensive in my mind.
I would like to ask Maintenance what they would think that it would need to be brought the building up to, to where it's very, very usable for the county. ADA compliant, is there any problem with, any major problem with the building? I'm much more interested in selling the old Sturdivant building. You know, once we get the foundation work done on it, then we would have this building to move soil and water, or whatever program would need to be moved into it. There's a lot more value in the Sturdivant building than there is for the county than there is in the old post office.
It's also a much larger building. We couldn't move everybody from the Sturdivant building into the old post office. There's, it's a much smaller building, so some folks would have to go somewhere else. But yeah, I agree, the Sturdivant building is, does have more value.
And what was the tax value of the old post office?
Two oh seven.
So, with reevaluation coming up, we sell this building for sixty-seven thousand. Somebody's property gets reevalued at two hundred thousand, can they come in and say, well, you sold this property that was valued at a tax value of two hundred thousand, and you said it was worth sixty-seven thousand? Is that a argument you can use with the valuation committee?
Yeah, one piece of the valuation process is sales of comparable properties. You know, there aren't, I don't know how many comparable properties there are to that post office, but yeah, certainly. If your neighbor's house is identical and is sold for a hundred thousand dollars less than yours, then you could, you have a logic, you have an argument to have the value of your property reassessed, certainly.
So, the people in town or a building that size on the mains, on the Main Street affair would have an argument to reevaluate or to look at their taxes?
If it's in as poor a shape as the post office, certainly, yes.
According to Ms. Klein's letter, you anticipate investing approximately two hundred thousand dollars in repairs? So, if you invest two hundred thousand dollars repair with the, the purchase price of sixty-five thousand dollars, then we would have a property that would be on the tax books for two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, because we've got to take into account the investment she's making in repairs.
The building's worth what somebody's willing to pay for it. I just think it's on the books too much, and I think it's, to me, it's an eyesore, along with some other buildings on Main Street, but the county, to me, doesn't need to be in a rental business, and I don't think the county needs to spend money to run it.
Well, any other thoughts, comments? I know I haven't weighed in, but I, I see both sides of it, but as being stewards, we have a property here that I'm challenged to move any services to because of its size. It has no room for growth, it has limited parking for any services that I think we could put there and do justice, and I've tried to have, have several conversations with different departments to try to come up with any good use for the county. And I do not like seeing it sitting there. It's just going down, going backwards. I, I think this is a great purpose for it, this will bring some value to it, and it will, it'll make a, it's going to take some effort, a good investment, but I, I really like the idea. Yeah, I'm, you know, I wished it had brought a little more money, but the number that I had in mind that I thought it would be worth would be around eighty thousand. But as Larry says, and I totally agree with it, and I'll bet you Greg does too, something's worth what somebody's willing to give for it. That's what really true market is. Now, we could hold on to it forever, but the longer we keep it, I think the less value it's going to be there, because it's going downhill unless we put some money into it. And I don't see that it makes a lot of sense to put money into, so, that's my two cents.
Motion to accept the offer, sir.
A second, Dan.
We have a motion to accept the offer, and a second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Three, two, three, two. Thank you all. Congratulations, or condolences. Either one you want, or both. I do look forward to, and I know the rest of the community will too, and I, I know the church, being sitting there, that close to the church, it will be a, a compliment, and wish you the best. All right, next on the list, general business, item number two is a resolution supporting an application to go to the LGC and borrow this money. We just had a public hearing on-
This is for our nine hundred thousand dollar real estate loan where we had the public hearing earlier, so I would ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
Make that motion, sir.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Not, all in favor, make it known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Five of them. Number three, fire tax. Next steps.
Excuse me, at the April first meeting, we, we first brought up the issue of the fire tax. If you remember, we looked at the publication from the School of Government, which I have a copy of what was in your board packet on April first, if you need a refresher there, you can pass those down. So, the article from the School of Government about implementation of a fire tax, and then we had a proposal from High Country Council of Governments to perform the mapping work that would be necessary to establish the fire districts. As far as the state is concerned, our current fire districts are not, they're not legally, they don't meet the legal requirements. They're basically gentleman's agreements that have been honored over the years, nothing, that's not a criticism, that's nothing wrong with that, but they have to be formally be established by the mapping process, and if-
If you don't mind, Mike, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
And we think that generally they would end up, as they are with the gentleman's agreement-
Oh, probably at least ninety percent, yeah.
With some slight variations along the line.
If you live within, say, five hundred yards of the existing boundary line, you may wind up, they decide you're closer to Glade Creek than you are to Cherry Lane, or vice versa, but ninety percent plus of the people will be in the same fire district that they are now. And of course, not only is it just mapping exactly how close you are to the fire station, but they would work with the fire chiefs as well. You know, it may be, as the crow flies, closer to this fire department, but because the roads are better, it makes more sense to have them in this fire district, so she would certainly, they would certainly work with the existing fire chiefs. So, we, the action on April first was to, excuse me, to table it until tonight, give a thirty-day comment period for the public. We put the video on the website, had the comment box. We've only received three comments, all have been in favor of a fire tax. I haven't, but again, three is a very small number. Just interaction with citizens, I haven't had, I haven't run across anyone that's completely opposed to a fire tax. Eighty-nine out of one hundred counties in North Carolina collect a fire tax of some, in some method or another, eighty-nine out of a hundred. Again, just because all your friends jump off a cliff doesn't mean you should jump off a cliff, that's not necessarily a reason to do it. They range, the lowest fire tax in the state is actually West Jefferson's, one point seven cents. The highest is Barnardsville, which is in Buncombe County, theirs is sixteen cents. Most fire taxes range five to eight, five to nine cents, something like that. We looked at, we did some work back at our retreat in January. At that time, we were not including the rescue squad in our calculations, that was just an oversight on my part, I didn't think about that at the time. We looked at, you know, I think they ranged from maybe two cents to like five and a half or six cents, we estimate by fire department here. So, throwing the rescue squad in, it would, it would alter those figures just a little bit. But if we want to proceed with studying a fire tax, the next step would be whether it's tonight, or whether it's at some future meeting, deciding we're going to pay for the mapping services from the High Country Council of Government. And we can do that tonight and start immediately, we could do that and make it part of next year's budget, start in July, or of course, we can continue to table it and then study the issue further. But I would ask for guidance from the board at this point.
I believe the first thing that we've got to do is make the decision that we are going to institute a fire tax. If there's not a vote for the institution of the fire tax, there's no need to go and make a contract to have someone draw up the districts.
There's still some value in, in drawing the districts and the study, you know, evaluating our current districts and distance to fire stations and things like that, there's still some value in doing that.
Statutorily, I'm not sure we can do that, because we've got to have public hearings beforehand.
Yeah.
Which, which is where I want to go. Hang on just a second.
Okay.
The process will, we will, I think, make sure that our pricing that we got for drawing is still current, and then there'll be a time period where they'll come in and do the drawing, and I was involved with or heard some of the conversations and feedback from where this was done recently in Wilkes County, and they worked really well with the fire departments and came out, and the lady from High Country was, they said she was super to work with and worked with them very well, and the process wasn't that painful. We'll get these drawings, and then we'll have to have a public hearing for everybody to, anybody who wants to can come in and look at the districts and the drawings. And then after that, we would then decide and vote to move forward from that point.
It'd be sort of a non-binding decision to move forward with, with the process.
Yeah.
We cannot institute a fire tax tonight, we don't have the background information done, but certainly if the board wants to continue down the road, I think we would, the next step would be the, the mapping, and, you know, whether we want to pay for it from this year's budget or next year's budget, since we're this close to the end of the year.
I would, some things I've been thinking about with this is, for the public, is, we're currently collecting a fire tax, we just don't call it a fire tax. We're paying money to fire departments from our tax revenue. And there's not, I don't think, any danger or any risk in us not continuing to support at the level we have, which was increased last year. at the level we have, which was increased last year. Probably the biggest one increase year we've had in a while. So I don't, that's not the conversation, as far as I'm concerned, the conversation and what this, the benefit with this would be was for the fire departments then to actually be able to turn in a budget, which we would still be in control of. We would still, I mean, you turn in your numbers, this board would be the one that determined whether or not we were going to establish the tax rate to match that revenue that you say your expenses are. So we're still going to be kind of in the driver's seat, but it's going to be a, a little bit of a different partnership. And then what that tax, fire tax would do is it would allow you, if you needed to go to borrow money for equipment, you would have a designated revenue source differently than what you have now, which is a, which is appropriations. That, that in my understanding, and I know Bill being on the board, we've talked about it a little bit, that would help you to be able to have a designated number. However, that number could change from year to year based on the board that's sitting here, as it could now. I don't see that ever being a problem. I think, you know, we recognize the value of our fire departments and are trying to do what we can, and we know it's, it's a chronic issue with keeping members and all that's required of you all, the same amount of, of, of classes and training that a paid fire department has, is no less, as I understand it. And I'm seeing heads nodding yes. So we, we recognize the, the burden, but we also see the value. And a lot of, I don't think a lot of the community probably really does, but you know, if, without fire departments, we're not mandated to fund the fire departments by the state. We are by the people, though. If we don't have fire departments, everybody's home insurance is going to at least probably double. So as I say, I don't think this, the conversation is really whether or not you're going to get funded if we do the fire tax or not funded if we don't do it. It's, the funding is going to continue. It's just going to look a little bit differently and hopefully help all the fire departments with future purchases of equipment and having incomes if you need to go talk to the bank and, and hopefully we can maybe help with some of that going forward too, so. Any other comments?
Once, once these fire districts come back, from my understanding, that we will go to each district and have a public meeting?
Well, we can have all five public hearings here at a board meeting. You don't have to do them at the side of the fire district. We could have, we could have them all here right in a row, you know.
But the residents will have an opportunity to come before the board?
Yes, we're required to have them on display for 30 days. So once the maps are done, they would be available for, we put them on the website, have printed copies available at least 30 days prior to the public hearings. But I mean, just for the sake of time, I would recommend we have the public hearings like we did tonight. We'll just have five public hearings right in a row to receive input. And of course, the fire chiefs would be involved in the mapping process as they go through.
They would be very familiar with them by the time we got to the public hearings. Any other comments, thoughts, questions?
Is there any vote ever taken by the general public if they want a fire tax or they don't? And we have five districts right now. Would one district opt out of the fire tax or do the commissioners make that decision for everybody in the county?
It's the commissioner's decision.
Then some, some fire districts will be charged a smaller tax than some other fire districts.
That's correct.
So there are.
Could be, yeah.
Possible.
And at most places, that's the case. Yeah, they vary.
Because everybody has different needs. Different fire districts have different needs. So some people's taxes, whatever our tax rate is the next time, some people will have a, for example, 56 cent tax. Some people may have a 55 and a half cent tax. So there's, there'll be a discrepancy in people's taxes throughout the county not being the same. Now, everybody's tax is the same, but one district may have a little bit more or a little bit less. And do we still keep the fire commission as a county project or is that turned over to the five fire districts?
Well, that would be part of the decision when we get to the, to the finish line. I would imagine we would keep the fire commission as a, as far as our budget, the fire commission is just a department where we pool, you know, we keep the money that we match the fires, you know, the firemen's insurance and things like that, and their grant matches. So from our budget, the fire commission is just a department. We can change the name of it, we can do away with it, whatever we want to do. Now, the fire commission that Commissioner John Irwin is on that meets with the fire chiefs monthly or every other month or whatever, that is a separate item and they, they can continue or, or not, that would be, you know.
In our budget, we have a line item for the fire commission.
Yeah, that's just a department. So we, we can do away with that. We could move the, you know, we're going to continue matching probably the fired, you know, we continue matching their grants or we, we can, we can dissolve that department or we can keep it open. That would be a decision for about this time next year.
And would there, is there any oversight on the commissioner's part as to how the fire departments spend their money? Do we see their daily books or checkbook? Do we see anything from them?
Well, this year, we had requested, you've seen your budget books, we'd requested a letter from their accountant or bookkeeper that they were complying with the generally accepted accounting principles. We've, we get, we're getting updated copies of their Form 990s and there's one other item that we've asked for, but detailed ledgers and things like that we have not asked for. Again, kind of to Mark's point, right now, there, we're giving them taxpayer money. If we have a fire tax, we're giving them taxpayer money, so there's no need for additional oversight if we go to a fire tax than what we're doing now. We're, we're giving them basically the same amount of, same amount of taxpayer money. We're just slicing it a different way.
But the commissioners make the final decision on what that fire tax will be.
Yes, only county commissioners can set any tax rate.
Well, I think what I was getting, that some fire departments say we have a bad storm. Some fire departments send us the county commissioner's additional bill for 1,500 or 2,000, and it's a general breakdown. Other fire departments don't send us anything, you know. So that's, makes me wonder how the money's being spent in some fire departments versus other fire departments. I don't know if, that we have any oversight at any, any period. As to the fire tax, we, we're going to have five public hearings or one, whatever we decide on. I think that's the time for the people to say if they want it or they don't want it or ask questions. And, and none of this goes to salaries. We don't have any salaried farming. Some people on social media say, well, we need to keep paying these farming. We don't pay them anything. And this tax is not going to go to a salary.
No, we, of course, our, our money goes to the department. Really, the only thing that benefits the individual firemen is we have a small life insurance policy. I think it's $10,000 on each fireman that we pay a few dollars per person for. That's really the only direct benefit to the individual fireman. The rest of it goes to the department, so.
The, the tax that comes in from each district, each fire department, is that exclusively, spent back to that department? Is that, is that going to be some kind of a sharing monies with other departments? Is that, is it, what I'm asking is, is each individual district, the monies are coming off the tax, whatever that rate is, does that stay in that district?
Yes.
So there's no sharing with other departments or anything like that?
No, and that, that's one, really one of the arguments against the fire tax is every call is, what, three fire stations going out? Is that correct?
Correct.
So every fire in Piney Creek, it's not just the residents of Piney Creek that are incurring expenses, it's citizens of, say, Glade Creek or Sparta or wherever. That's one of the arguments against doing a fire tax by district. You know, the other option is we have a fire tax for the whole county. So right now, it's roughly three cents that we're distributing to the fire. That's, the other option is have one fire tax countywide of the same amount. So, and, you know, there's not, there's, one's not more correct than the other. That's enough. Very few counties, I only know of two counties that do it that way, that have one tax across the board. Avery County is the closest one to us geographically. They have a five cent fire tax countywide. Pretty much every other county that has a fire tax, it is, it does vary by district.
If it stays within that district, what's collected in that district?
If we go that route, yes, yes.
There'd be a little confusion about that.
Yeah, I understand. Again, I said we're every, we have multiple departments responding to every call. There's, there's a logical argument to do it a different way for that reason.
Well, it's like Sparta, they, they basically.
They get, they get the most, yeah.
They go to every call, you know. So it costs them more to operate, you know.
Make a motion.
Before you do, before you do, I would like to do something. I think we have a pretty good audience of folks that we're talking about here, serving in this capacity from our fire departments. Based on what you're familiar with right now, just a, a show of hands of, if, if you don't mind, if you're, support this fire tax. If, if you'd like to see us pursue this, show your, show us your hand or stand up, either one. Okay?
We say that's 100%.
No, you, you, you're front row, you're not, so.
We're here.
Okay, sorry.
I can just know you're on.
So.
I'm, I'm going to get in.
Ma'am, if you don't mind, hang on just one second. Hang, hang on just a second. Do you don't mind if, if we.
I don't mind at all.
Change the rules and let her come and speak.
No, I have no objection.
If you don't mind, come up to the mic if you don't mind, just so we can, everybody can hear you good. State your name for the audience.
I'm Ann Rawls and I live in the Cherry Lane Fire District and I'm Secretary of the Board of Directors. So I listened to what Commissioner Irwin said about the budgetary shortfall with the streetscape and the retirement fund and things that you all are going to have to have. And I listened to Mr. James on YouTube and I, I'm very confused about this tax. And I'm just wanting to know, will, is there a better way than typing in the question on the internet or will someone have a specific thing? I mean, why did you call it a fire tax if you've been sending us money all this time for the fire departments? Why all of a sudden do we have to say a fire tax? Because all of the departments do fundraising and normally people who pay taxes for nonprofits, their gifts diminish when they are paying for it in a tax. So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about how this is going to be. I'm not, I personally, I'm confused about the districts. I know that's, that's that. So will there be more information about this and will the money that you collect, if this goes through, will this money only be used for the fire departments or will it be used to, to fund other things that, you know, deficits or something? So I think that there are a lot of people who have a lot of questions and don't, we don't want to make a decision until everybody understands. So that was my only comment. And I, I know this is a loaded issue, but there are just a lot of things that didn't come across in Mr. James's, you know, the logistics of all of this, so that was.
If you don't mind, just stay right there just a second. Let me try to address this. When I said we already have a fire tax, what I mean is out of the taxes we collect, we are funding the fire departments. So we don't really have a designated fire tax. We determine the amount when we go through the budget process. Then this, this is actually then a designated fire tax that would only be returned back to the fire department from that district. It would, by statute, it couldn't do anything else. It is set based on, right now, we currently receive a, a, a request for funds from each Oftentimes, we don't fund them to the level that they request, but we do all we can. This would give us a little more leeway in changing the rate to, to compute to the amount that, to more funds if necessary. Like I said, it's still up to the board to decide the number, but whatever is determined, that, for, say, Cherry Lane, that money then would go, as, as Bill was saying many ago, would go back to Cherry Lane Fire Department. All of the tax, fire tax that's collected in that district at whatever rate is determined to generate the revenue to meet the budget request would go to your district. And those wouldn't cross lines.
I interject a few things, Mr. Chairman. Now, if this is implemented and Cherry Lane decides that you don't need any money, you don't need any funds, then whenever you, the, the volunteer fire department submits their budget request, zero it out. You will not have a fire tax. Now, you may end up with a fire, a, a small amount of tax to support the Allegheny, or Sparta Allegheny Volunteer Fire Department and the Rescue Squad because the Rescue Squad services the county. Allegheny, Sparta Allegheny Volunteer Fire Department rolls on every call because they're centrally located. So that would be a very minor amount, but it's up to your operational funds. What we would have to look at as a commissioner. So whenever you submit your budget and you say, we feel that we need X amount of money for this year to support the basic operations, the county commissioners would look at it, look at the tax rate, and if we feel that it is, is a tax rate that the community could support, we could enact it because only we can enact that tax rate on that. Now, right now, we don't have to give you a dime. Does this mean that you will submit a budget where you can buy a new fire truck? No, you are still going to have to volunteer, get out there and, and raise money because the county is not going to be able to tax these fire districts for a new fire truck. That will probably be out of our ability. So basically what we are doing right now is ensuring that you have the opportunity to receive funds through the fire tax. I'm going to give you an example. I believe it's Mitchell County was the most recent county where the judge came in and said, you have done nothing about security in the courthouse. I'm condemning it and you're building a $12 billion firehouse, courthouse. Now, if we had that situation happen to us, $12 billion mortgage payment would probably be approximately what we are giving to volunteer fire departments right now. So we could cut out all support instead of the county paying for the workman's comp, the insurance and the things that we say to the tune of $480,000. We can't afford it this year. Look at the fundraising that the volunteer fire departments are going to have to do. What we are trying to do is take some of this burden off of you and ensure, because every penny that is collected by a fire tax must go to the volunteer fire departments and the rescue squads. I mean, all we are is a conduit. We collect it and send it out. We don't even take a cut if we have a fire track. We collect it and send it out, we don't even take a cut if we have a fire tra, uh, uh, fire taxes, I understand it. But if this county suddenly got hit with a new courthouse, we have a high school that is 52 years old, we've gotta build a new high school, something of this nature, and we started looking at the budget, and we started cutting, there's no guarantee right now that you're gonna get a dime. What I have done, and I have pounded the table, and I have bent my fellow commissioners' ears now for two and a half years on this, I am simply wanting to make sure that there is a guarantee and a mechanism that you can receive funding in the volunteer fire departments and the rescue squads. Have I answered your questions, or do you have additional questions, please?
I, I would add, I would say, you, you mentioned about paying for Sparta Fire Department, for, for Cherry Lane's citizens paying a small portion to fire, to Sparta, I'm not sure that that would be applicable, because, I mean, if we're talk, we just, we're just talking about the taxes going back to the district that they're charged in.
Well.
I don't know that that would.
And then, Town of Sparta, guess what? You just got a very large bill.
Yeah, Town of Sparta would be based on the fact that they do that.
Yeah. And, and it is allowed.
Yeah.
Or also has the highest property value of the five districts, which helps with their tax rate as well, so.
Your question about donations and taxation, that kind of stuff, you'll still have private donations, and they'll still be handled the same way they are today. All this is, is just dividing up how the property tax and give you a way to identify those monies.
And I appreciate that, and I, no one, I've been associated with Cherry Lane now for over 20 years, so I know how hard our first responders and firefighters fight. I know how Sparta does, Glade Creek, Piney Creek, because when I had an incident of smoke, I had three departments show up where I live. So, I'm for anything that keeps us all together and cohesive, working and doing what the firefighters and first responders do best. So, I just, there was so much confusion around this that I needed a little bit of clarification, so I thank you for that. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for your concern. Did we answer your questions, or did we confuse you more?
Bobby, you got a comment or?
What, I think part of what Ann was saying is, there's no oversight. What I was asking as to what these fire departments will do with the taxpayers' money, we have very little oversight right now.
Currently.
Last year, we gave above and beyond what each fire department asked for. We gave them an extra $10,000. I think, over the years, the county has been very generous, and we've tried to help as much as we can, all the fire departments. We're helping Piney Creek right now with their building program. Is, is it possible for one fire department, district, to opt out of the fire tax and then let the county keep giving whatever they feel their portion should be? And?
I, I don't think so, but I, I wouldn't swear to that, but I, I don't think so. You could, they could set their rate at zero, but I, I don't think they could opt out. But I'm not positive.
If, if, you have, all of us have to be in it. You can't, one district can't opt out.
They can't opt out of there being a fire tax, but they can make no request for funds so that their tax would be zero.
Two other things that, three or four years ago, we had one fire district, it didn't even turn in a budget. Now, you know, John was saying, we'll just put a zero on it. Should we have, that year, just zeroed them out because they didn't put in a budget? We had, the county manager had to go ask them to put in a budget. So, you know, that's, doesn't send a good message to me that they need, you know, sometimes need all the money that they say they do. When my house catches on fire, I want three fire departments there to put it out. So, I mean, I'm supporting the fire department, but I want to be sure that we're spending our money in the best way, whether it's the commissioners keep giving it, or whether we go through a fire tax. And then, the other thing is, we're getting from the, I think there's a Senate bill coming through that may affect a, some retirement, or some money that goes to fire departments, EMSs. You've been centering us some.
Yeah, there's one Senate bill right now in the General Assembly that looks like it's gonna pass, that would, for, it's for individual firefighters, would allow some property tax relief for the firefighters. It's either a 20 or 25 percent reduction in their property tax for the individual firefighters. And it also has a provision, up to $3,100 of forgivable loans for certain items like college tuition and things like that, and increases the retirement contribution as well. So, yeah, that, that bill, that really benefits the individual firefighters, not necessarily the Glade Creek Fire Department, although it may help you recruit more members. You know, I, I went to the Fire Commission meeting several months ago, and had asked the fire chiefs, we were talking about recruiting members, kinda brainstormed some ideas, and a couple of, I don't remember who it was, a couple of folks suggested, "How about some, a discount on property taxes or things like that?" And, right now, statutorily, we can't do that. We can't, you know, I can't cut your taxes and not cut your taxes for, because you're a fireman, but if this bill passes, then firemen, all, the volunteer firemen that meet their 36 hours of training would have a reduced property tax burden, if that bill gets through the General Assembly. Looks like it will, but you never know. It ain't over till it's over.
You, you left out the most important part. It is an unfunded mandate.
Of course.
Meaning, the county will pay for it.
If the state does it for you.
So, that burden would fall back on the county.
Yeah, I mean, it.
If it passes.
Yeah, I mean, that, you're probably looking at 10 or $15,000, it's not a crippling number, but yes, we'd have to make up that revenue somewhere else.
Well, I, I just think it'll be interesting when we have the public meetings. I was hoping that each district could either be in or be out of the fire tax, but we can't do that.
And I would, I would like to speak to the, you talk about, for example, if one didn't want any money, or if they could submit a zero request, well, I don't know that they're not saying, if they don't want a fire tax, I'm pretty sure they're not saying they don't want the help from the county. So, I, I don't know that that's where we're gonna be able to go with that. So, hopefully, we can get more information out, and, you know, we will have time for that, if, as we move forward, and answer some of those questions, maybe directly, as we move along with it.
Another question from the audience, Mr. Chairman.
Ma'am, we're recording, and it would really help us to get it on. I appreciate you coming up.
I'm Jennifer Robinson, and I'm the Treasurer of the Cherry Lane Volunteer Fire Department. And I think one of our biggest concerns is, if we tell our community that we're gonna charge them a fire tax, the donations that we get from our commit, our community, which are very beneficial to us, are gonna fall back. And that's where we're gonna lose more money than what we might gain from fire taxes. No, as a treasurer, I don't want to give up a dime to say, "Oh, we don't need money." You know, that's not responsible. But I think, you know, that, that is kind of, there's two concerns. One is, if we charge our firefighters a fire tax when they're volunteering to fight our fires, what is the incentive of them becoming volunteers? They're being charged for the service they're providing.
They don't have much of any.
Well, then another is, how is this going to affect donations from the community? You know, if, if we are being charged fire taxes, are we inclined to support our communities with fundraisers that they might do, or an annual giving? So, that's our two concerns.
And I believe that's a very valid question, no, no question about it.
Those are major.
We do have a, we do have a lot of giving folks and caring folks, and I, I believe that they would step up one way or the other. And if they didn't, then we could make them step up by the fire tax. I mean, if you lost all your funding because of that, and I don't think that would happen, but it could, then it could be replaced through the fire tax.
If I may, I believe, Piney Creek, you sent out a letter requesting support, requesting donations. Am I correct in that you had a 19 percent return?
That's probably a high number.
19 percent of the people supported them after a request. Now, as far as the.
That's not within the Cherry Lane Volunteer Fire Department, because.
And you are very, you are very lucky where you have people that will donate, but there are other volunteer fire departments, which we're primarily concerned about, that don't have that luxury. And I've got news for you. Your volunteer fire departments are paying a tax right now, 3 percent, or 3 cents of the property taxes reimbursed to the volunteer fire departments and rescue squads right now. So, it's not going to change.
But it's not named a fire tax.
No, it is not a fire tax. In this budget right here, we can take that line item out, if we are so stretched, we could take that line item out and shift a burden of the, the, the insurance that we're paying, the retirement that we are reimbursing for, your grant money that we reimburse you, $15,000 a year, we could take that out of this budget, if we are stretched, and right now, we are stretched. And now, you can raise the money, because we are not required to do that as county commissioners. We do it out of goodness of our heart, but there comes a time, if this budget is there, and we've gotta face those hard times, it could possibly shift back on the volunteer fire departments. I don't think it ever will in this county, to be quite honest with you, because we have tremendous support with our volunteer fire, fire departments. As far as raising money, if you go out and you give a specific reason of why you need to raise this money, because all we're going to do, and I'll speak for this board, I can't speak for future boards, we're just reimbursing you your general operating expenses. If you have to go to the public to raise money for a new fire truck, they're gonna dig, and they will dig deep. We always have in this county. This is the most forgiving county I have ever seen. These people will bend over backwards. So, bottom line, guaranteed income, or the possibility of the future, that you will have to triple your fundraising efforts.
Jennifer, you would not be accessing a fire tax from your fire department. That's a county function. The county is doing the fire tax. You're just helping us allocate how that money gets distributed. It's the same tax. They're paying it now in person, in property tax, we're just taking that much out of personal property and calling it a fire tax. All it is, is a movement of what, how you identify that. The whole purpose is, it will help the fire departments have monies that they can identify. This is what we're gonna get, so they can go to the bank and borrow money based on a tax that they're getting. There's no new tax. You still raise money the same way you do today.
But do the general public know that?
We gotta help educate them.
Yeah. That's the point, you know, is, is educating the public. So, you know, if I'm confused, the public's gonna be confused.
Part of the challenges of anything in Allegheny County, one paper, no radio station. How do we get the word out? We broadcast these, these county commissioner meetings. No, what do we get? On a exciting night, we will have 14 people?
I'm waiting on an exciting night.
Yeah.
Well, I don't, I think that people that are interested in a certain topic will be here, but, you know, it should come on a regular basis when it's information that, you know, doesn't apply to us, but.
I would, I would add one more comment there, is, is, as you've mentioned, the firemen having to pay, called out fire tax. Well, I bet you, they would, if their house caught on fire, they would call for the services. So, I mean, it, there's a, there's a benefit there that everybody benefits from, from the work of all of our fire departments, so.
I'd really pay a three cent fire tax if it always floods. I'll be on, just all, all the volunteer fire, out there, please flood it. Every day, we do it. We, act for it. I mean, the work. We'll see it, and we're, we can.
Agreed, that's why we try to parse the.
That's why we're here. We're not rich, Glade Creek don't have money. We don't have the money.
But we tried to do it through sales tax, and no one would approve it.
One thirty-four.
Right.
And if we, we stepped up and done so.
And I guarantee you, if we put fire tax to a referendum, it'd be voted down, because Allegheny County will not vote for a tax increase.
Exactly. But when they do lose their fire department, then they're gonna go, "Why couldn't?" And that's why it's a little.
All right, let's go ahead and kinda rein this back in. Anybody else would like to speak on this, if the board's okay with it? I mean, we've taken some comments, we've, we've shared some information, I think there will be more as we go forward, more time for it. We're not making, we're not taking action tonight, whether to do it or not to do it, so.
I appreciate you.
We certainly want to hear from you as we go forward.
Between the two, the better understanding is very beneficial.
Okay.
There will be other comments before.
I've got one question, Mr. Chairman, a little bit of clarity. Are we paying workman's comp on the fire?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And a, and a small life insurance policy as well.
Okay.
Enough to bury you anyway.
And reimbursing for their retirement. It comes out to about $480,000 a year.
And you'll say that number here.
Yeah.
As we move through the next four weeks or so.
Now, one thing I, one thing I would like to point out to the commissioners, Bobby Irwin was correct, we gave you an extra $10,000 per last year, but that was because we also donated $25,000 to Piney Creek with the commitment that we would do so again this year for their capital campaign to build the, the fire, the firehouse that they have up there. Hopefully, we'll see it go up. So, there was some quid pro quo there.
Anyone else from the board?
A motion, I don't, I don't think we have a second.
A motion, what was it for?
A motion to proceed with the fire tax, whatever the next steps are.
Which would be, let's, let's spell out specifically what we're gonna do.
Next step would be the contract for the mapping of the, of the five fire districts.
Make a motion, we enter into the contract for the mapping for the fire district, sir.
Take that motion.
We, are, we would at least see the contract and then determine whether, okay. Motion to move forward with the district drawing and look for a contract to approve. Would that make the best sense on wording?
Aye.
All in favor, making all the same.
Aye.
Just tell me what we're voting on again.
Uh, to.
The $7,000?
Yes, yeah, it was $7,000, I believe.
Well, he's gonna bring us a contract.
Yeah, the one we had has technically expired, the, the offer, so we'll have to get updated, $7,500.
Just to move forward.
Yeah, he's gonna go get a new number, and we're gonna look at that contract.
And then, okay.
And then we'll vote on that contract whenever we see that.
Okay.
All in favor, I think we got a couple over here, and all is unanimous? Thank you. Good discussing. Break time, let's take the five minutes. Let's take the five minutes.
What's the yearly cost gonna be? What's the upfront cost gonna be? I mean, I don't have those numbers to the point, but I'm pretty close. But, you know, there's always those unforeseen whenever you're dealing with the state and you have to keep things up to state regulations.
Do we have a property that we could build an animal shelter on? Are we gonna have to go buy a property if we go that route?
Look around at surrounding counties. Most animal control facilities, dog pounds, however you may, are near the transfer station or the landfill. Now, that sounds horrible. I understand that. But that's just kinda where they all locate. They're, they kinda combine. Most of those two departments I just mentioned end up working together.
Do you have a price on what a animal shelter would cost that would meet state requirements?
For state requirements, fifteen hundred square feet would be a gracious plenty. There's not a set number. That all comes back to the animal control ordinance. How long we hold the dogs? If it is a no-kill shelter, I mean, there's, there's, you know, hundreds of options out there. So, you know, you build a facility for fifteen hundred square feet. I'm just saying, that's what that is. You lay that building out a block, obviously for the low maintenance side of things, to wash it down every day, so on and so forth, you know, and just go high with a block building at a hundred dollars a square foot. That's a concrete floor and concrete blocks. You know, you're, you're not having to, I mean, you got it to have interior finishes and stuff. So, let's go high with that number. There has to be no outside holding pens. That is not a state regulation. Animals have to be walked twice a day and fed twice a day. And don't hold me to that one. It may be three times a day. I'm not a hundred percent sure on what I just said there. Actually came out before I really gave it a lot of thought. I'm pretty certain.
You admitted it.
Yes, it's twice a day walking. I know that for sure. But I think it's twice a day being fed. And that's cleaning the pens both times while they're being walked. So, you are gonna have employee costs there, whether it be part-time. Probably would have to have at least one full-time person at the shelter at all times.
Who goes out now?
Um, Nash and, and his employees.
One other issue that we have, and Twin Oaks took wonderful care of my twenty-year-old cat the last two years for life. I have nothing negative to say. Wonderful group. But Twin Oaks Veterinary Hospital is not a corporation, is not an LLC. It is a sole proprietorship. This is legal nitpicking. I know, feel free to fall asleep if you're not interested. But if something were to happen to Nash and he's, I don't know how, he's well north of seventy. I don't know how old he is. Looks like he's in great health, may live another twenty years, I don't know. But if something happens to him tonight, Twin Oaks Veterinary Hospital no longer exists. We no longer have a contract with anybody to run our animal shelter. Now, I'm pretty confident the other veterinarians that work for him, we could work out some kind of interim. I'm confident that would happen. But technically, we would have no animal shelter if something happened to, to Dr. Williams, you know, on his way home from work tonight. So, that, that's another, and again, ten or, looking five or ten years down the road, I don't know how much longer he's gonna be practicing. I mean, we got a lot of things, other things like that as well, that we have to think about. Not just...
That's no big deal to work out, something in a contract.
I can't imagine it would be too onerous. But technically, though, I mean, again, it's legal nitpicking, but technically, we have no animal shelter. We're out of compliance if he, if he passes away tonight.
That's just a minor, very minor detail.
We are compensating.
Do you think that any of the state runoff water goes into that building and goes into the septic tank?
I've had several conversations with Kemp Irwin, who supposedly has done a lot of grading work down there around that facility. I know that they had a problem whenever they built the bypass road. I know that his tales tell me that he has fixed that problem. So, I don't, I don't know, I mean, you can look at the lay of the land and see that there's a lot of water going to that building, no matter which way it is, if there's water going to that building.
If you look at the drainage from Twin Oaks store, it comes down right along the highway, and there's a big drain that comes straight across to Nash's. I think it's a two-foot culvert, comes straight across the Nash's. And all the water that comes down at two-twenty-one-twenty-one intersection, when there's a heavy rain, it's dug a ditch over eighteen inches deep. All that water funnels right into that, up against that building. That water goes someplace. If it's going into the building, once it gets in the building, then it goes into the septic tank. Isn't that right?
That's right.
They've got four, four-inch drains built into that lower level.
Yeah, there's probably more than four.
Four or five, whatever. So, it's possible that some of that water is coming off of the state, coming into that building. At some point, I would think DOT would need to be involved in looking at what they're doing with their runoff water. And the septic tank is roughly, it's a fifteen-hundred gallon?
Yes.
I was there when he was pumping it out the last time, and it was not pumped to the bottom. So, we paying a full five hundred dollars and just getting a partial pump out? Some, to me, there needs to be some control.
Yeah. And, and one problem with that is, he can suck, now, he can suck that septic tank out, but where the fill lines don't drain, the, the fill lines are draining back into the septic system as he's pumping it out. And I will speak on his defense, because he actually, he's called me two or three times to come down there and say, "I just wanna show you, I pumped this thing dry, my truck's full. Now, I've gotta pump it again."
Well, one thing that concerns me is if the county takes over being a kill station for these dogs and cats, by law, you just keep them five days.
Uh, that's the way the ordinance is written right now. I do know that Save-A-Pet is wanting to make it a no-kill shelter if they have any part in it.
Nash keeps them for weeks and months sometimes, walks them two or three times a day, and his, according to him, his adoption rate is seventy-five percent on the dogs. I don't know if anybody else has an adoption rate that high.
No, they don't here, because we don't have enough shelters. So, I can't speak for other counties. I, I don't know.
But, but before we do anything, I, I wanna see numbers, what it's gonna cost the county versus what it would cost to add three or four additional pumpings to the septic tank.
Yeah.
If it's five hundred dollars, you do it right now six times a year. You know, do we go to eight times a year? Does that solve the problem? Working with DOT, does that help solve the problem? I think there's a lot of ifs still out there. My last three dogs have come from the pound at Nash's. I wouldn't trade any of them for anything. But if they'd have been on county property, they would have been killed within whatever the time limit is. So, I, I think there's a value to Matt, to Nash and his people trying to adopt these animals out.
Yeah. And, and speak, sorry, and speaking back on the contract, I mean, that's another thing. I assume that's what this kinda conversation I'm here for, so to speak. You know, we gotta watch that contract. It's kinda open-ended, starting July one. We went forty-five, fifty-five to no cap. So, I mean, we have to be careful with what we do. If we, if we continue putting that extra eight or nine pumpings in there, what's gonna happen on the other end of what we're having to pay for our services with Nash? So, I mean, there's a lot of fine print here that we really gotta watch, you know, what's coming about, you know, and it takes six months to get out of the contract. So, we're already past July one. You know, I've studied that contract like the back of my hand. I can't sit here and tell you word for word, but I can give you, you know, general information out of it that kinda is an eye catcher. So, there is some things we're gonna have to watch and be careful with.
You, you've mentioned several times Save-A-Pet.
Mm-hmm.
Have they approached us?
They have.
Would they run the shelter if we set up a separate shelter? Have they given an indication of that?
I had a conversation with Jessica Cook last week and spoke with her about this situation. She is telling me that by what she is figuring, there would have to be one full-time employee there, and the rest could be part-time employees. So, my question was, where's our help at? You know, Save-A-Pets come forward, they're, they're helping the county, they're helping all these animals. What are, what is gonna be your selling point to these commissioners to, "Let's build our own facility. Now, this is how we're gonna man it." I couldn't never get a direct answer. I did get an email with some figures in it, but all those figures were money figures.
I'd, I'd take it to one full-time employee would be a county employee?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
We've got another option with the septic, which Josh and I have talked about, but we haven't talked to anybody at Twin Oaks yet, is we, if we paid all or part of the connection fee to connect them to the sewer, it would acquire bore under the highway. I think it would be fifty thousand dollars, probably something like that, to connect them to the sewer. Uh, if, if they would pay part of the cost, I mean, again, that's another option that would eliminate the septic concerns that way. So, if we wanna keep the, the animal shelter there for another ten or fifteen years, of course, to do that, we'd have to have some kind of backup contract, you know, for the succeeding company things. But that's just another, that's another option as well that's out there, so.
They get inspected, what, twice a year?
Yeah.
Is it possible for, I don't know who schedules the inspection, but to have that inspector come to a daytime meeting with the commissioner?
Yeah, they're, they're really not scheduled, but she just shows up unannounced. I mean, that's how she gets her violations wrote up through the state. I mean, that's just...
Where do they come out of?
Uh, that lady, I wanna say she's from Thurman. She's not far, she don't live too awful far.
They could come and give a presentation.
Yeah.
Probably have somebody from that agency come to a meeting. Maybe not necessarily our inspector, but someone from that state agency, I think, we could probably get here at some point.
It certainly looks like there's a major problem down there with runoff coming across, because those culverts are about half-stopped up, as you can see down there.
DOT's adding to it.
Which is not our problem, but we end up...
Well, it is if we're paying...
Well, that's what I mean. We end up, but I mean, it's, it's nothing we can do as far as with the state, because it's his property. We don't own the property. We're just in an agreement to provide a service to us at a cost and a maintenance upkeep of this chronic septic problem.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we are under a contract, fifty-four thousand a year?
Fifty-five.
And we are responsible for the maintenance of that building and the pumping of the septic tank. That is above the fifty-five.
Above the fifty-five.
What else is in that maintenance but the pumping? What else, what else is involved inside the building?
Uh, let's see. Maintain and upkeep, all holding pins? There's, don't, I'm not exact on this, there's twenty, twenty-five holding pins in the basement and outside. When the animals have to be put down, we're responsible for removing them from the premises.
And the cost?
Electric bill is separate, half the electric bill. Uh, the pro-
We've had to gravel out there a time or two.
The gravel a time or two. The propane to keep heat in the basement, this is all extra of the fifty-five.
I haven't asked one on what that adds up.
I would say that's gonna put us somewhere in the neighborhood, if you include the, the septic pumpings, probably sixty-five to seventy a year.
Over and above the fifty?
Yes. Uh, no, 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 fifty-five plus those ten or fifteen.
I think you should, I mean, my thoughts is, is look at some numbers for each option. Give us some budget numbers, and let's kinda discuss those going forward and, you know, see if there's anything that can be done for the water out there, that he's, can he do anything? And the option of, you know, what, what would it be a number for getting under the road, tying in? And, you know, just lay everything out there and see what makes the most sense.
And I would say approach DOT and find out what they can do.
My thoughts, anything, any other thoughts?
Doing some inquiries and figuring is the only thing that I can think. It's open-ended. We, next year, it could be seventy-five to eighty thousand. Granted, last year was a unusual year with rainfall, but...
Sounds like it's starting out a lot better this year, you know. Any other thoughts from your side, Josh?
Um, you know, I'll finish getting these numbers together for you and maybe bring them back to you at the next meeting.
Thank you. All right, that finishes up general business. We have a couple items on the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments there? So, Cherry Lane, Board of Directors appointments and reimbursement resolution?
I have no objections, sir.
I can motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion, sir.
Motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Not, I'm in favor, make it no, but saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Five votes. Thank y'all.
Yes.
Yeah. We are now to our budget presentation.
You want to do the presentation, then set the calendar, or do you wanna set the calendar first? What's the pleasure of the board?
Just we could try to set the calendar.
First, we are rolling, doing the budget presentation about three weeks earlier this year than normal, so that gives us a little more flexibility. So, I had suggested, normally, we needed four or five work sessions to get through everything. I had suggested the af, you know, the, June third is our regular evening meeting at six-thirty. I'd suggested three or four o'clock that afternoon for one of the sessions. And then, June seventeenth, at our ten o'clock meeting, I'd suggested the afternoon then, you know, two o'clock, something like that, as two possible dates. I've thrown out some dates to you guys before, so.
I won't, I have meetings in, in that...
At two o'clock?
Yeah, we'd, we'd, we have, that was what I had suggested in an email a couple of weeks ago. But like, June the third, that's our six-thirty meeting night, so we could start at three, something like that, that afternoon, work a couple hours as a possibility.
June the fifth, you said nine AM?
Yeah, June the fifth. I'm, I'm open all day on June the fifth.
And you can't do nine AM?
I'm good on the fifth. I can't do the seventeenth. So, six-three and six-five?
Six-three at three o'clock, six-five at nine o'clock.
It's eleven?
The eleventh, Bill has soil and water meeting at eight, but we could meet nine-thirty or ten or something like that.
That was three o'clock.
Or, or three o'clock's fine, too, yeah.
That's on the eleventh, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have anything on the sixth? No. No, the third? You said that we...
It was three o'clock.
All right, the third?
The fifth at nine o'clock.
Got it.
The eleventh at three o'clock.
Fifteen hundred, okay. Fifteen hundred? Have any others?
I don't think you have.
Got a commissioners' meeting, seventeenth, what time?
What do you have?
Fourteen hundred?
I, I can't do that.
Do you do the morning?
We got a meeting that morning, and I'm in meetings, I got two more in Boone, that afternoon and evening.
Eighteenth?
It works for me. Eighteen? How are you on eighteen?
AM would be good.
Five AM?
Zero-five-hundred it is?
What time?
You can go home, feed the cows when you get there.
Nine AM?
Nine o'clock's fine.
Zero-nine-hundred? Two-three, four sessions?
We avoiding the rest of May for some reason?
Uh, no, the, you know, the, let's see. The thirtieth, Thursday, the thirtieth, uh, you, I would give you guys a couple of weeks to, you know, get intimate with the budget. But Thursday, the thirtieth, I'd be available in the afternoon.
About the week prior to that.
Let's see.
Yeah, we, we can't, we can't go there anyway.
Twenty-third and twenty-fourth is open for me.
I'm good on either date. I can't do it on the twentieth or twenty-first.
Twenty-seventh is Memorial Day. Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, I could do the afternoon.
Larry's gone that week.
Okay. So, twenty-third or twenty-fourth would be fine, or both?
I could do that. Twenty-third?
Morning on the twenty-third.
Okay. Zero-nine?
Mm-hmm. That's five there.
June the third? Fifteen hundred. The fifth? Zero-nine?
The twenty-first of May?
AM at Pear, I'm in Pear's Island. I'm twentieth and twenty-first. I, I leave right after the commissioner meeting and won't be back until the night of the twenty-first.
Twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, I'm available.
I'd like to get a couple of days together there on when we get back to it. One day, we'll, we'll just get in our groove.
Nine o'clock again on the twenty-fourth?
Will that work? Anybody else have a problem with that?
Later in the day would be good for me.
What, what, what would you prefer?
I don't know. First off?
Twenty o'clock, two o'clock.
Go to the VA.
Bobby can't do the twenty-fourth anyway.
Okay.
What, on those other, I see three o'clock times or nine AMs? I mean, are, are those times okay? I mean, we're...
What's the date? The twenty-third?
Twenty-third, nine AM. Twenty-fourth, we can't do, though.
Okay.
Would the twenty-third mess anybody up at starting like, three o'clock?
I could do that.
I'm good. At the three?
Yeah.
Three PM?
Twenty-third?
Nine o'clock.
Three.
Are you changing?
Yeah. Your neighbor over there wants to move up in the afternoon. It's too early for him to get up.
I can sleep late.
I hope.
You got farming-type activities that morning.
When I quit milking, I don't get up early.
I'll have Drew confirm this with an email, I hope.
Well, we might get it all done in that first day, so we might need the rest of it.
Well, if we started at nine, we might have gotten it done, all done the first day, so...
Just eat a late supper.
We wanna go ahead and set our schedule, our public hearing date?
Yes. I'd suggested the twenty-fifth. Now, normally, we do the, the public hearing for the budget when the budget is done or pretty well done. We don't have to. We can do the public hearing at the June the third regular commissioner meeting, at the June's, a lot of counties do it early in April or something. But we have traditionally done it as a separate meeting, very late in the process, but there's no requirement to do that. We can have it as part of our June third meeting if you want to. Or, again, I, Tuesday, the, normally, we would do it somewhere around Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, so, of June.
It needs to be in the evening?
It should be in the evening, yes.
Well, we have actually kinda done it both ways, but, but as Mike stated, we have done it more toward the end of the process.
I think most counties do it earlier in the process.
I, I favor doing it earlier than at the end, which gives folks an opportunity to come in, you know, before we get all of our work done, if, if anybody wants to. Seldom do we see that many show up, but, you know, when we're kind of approaching the end, you know, it's hard for us to go back and change a bunch of numbers. Of course, we can, we have. Sometimes it's been, we, we change a number or two right on the last and have to save a few days for them to compute all of that, get us some new numbers out. But it's, I mean, the statute just says we have to have it somewhere in the budget process. What's the pleasure? You wanna do it earlier?
Yes.
Get shot earlier, we wanted to do it at the meetings.
What day? What, how earlier? First, somewhere around the first of June?
June third looks good to me.
I mean, we could do it in with that meeting?
Do in the June third meeting.
Okay. And to publish that?
We will need to set a meeting to enact the budget.
Right.
Which...
To vote on the...
Resolution, budget resolution.
On the same day?
Yeah, at the evening meeting?
After.
Yeah, at the six-thirty meeting. Do what, Larry?
Six-thirty meeting?
Yeah, for the public hearing.
We don't have to set the date for the budget resolution enactment yet, if you wanna have a couple of work sessions and then figure that out.
Let's find the day that we're all free on and work from there, since we're all here and kinda, 'cause I don't know about the rest of you, but my days get kinda filled up in a hurry sometimes.
June, the twenty-ninth and thirtieth are the weekends, so I'd suggest Tuesday, the twenty-fifth.
Yeah. Monday, Tuesday, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth?
About June?
Yeah. This would be the, kind of our target last day.
I'll make it happen.
Which one?
Twenty-fourth.
Fourth?
Yeah. Them doctors don't need my money anyway.
It can be any time of day you want it to be. So, that's generally, generally a very short meeting.
Zero-three-hundred.
Let's let you know, our auditors are here that week, so they'll be right here in the little room the whole week.
Yep.
That's fine, they won't bother us.
No, but I'm just, just heads up, you're not surprised.
Three PM? He's up by three?
Ten, seven o'clock.
Three o'clock or four o'clock, something like that?
What time?
About four. We ain't done a four o'clock yet. Can you be up by then, Bill?
Yes, sir.
Uh, four o'clock?
Remember, at four o'clock, it's five o'clock somewhere, so...
I've got a Fairgrounds committee meeting, so I don't think that'd be a problem.
It's what, five or five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Yeah, we'll be done by then.
I think that'll get us a good start, if we need to, see, we need a few more. We've got some extra time in there.
You, you can always recess in...
I know you're looking forward to it, ain't ya?
You can always recess any of these work sessions and, till the next day or whatever as well, so...
Yeah. If we get done early, we just wait till the last day and finish. Or, we go ahead and finish early, 'cause we don't have to publish that last date to, to, to meet, to vote on the resolution.
No, not, not yet, no.
Right. I mean, we would need to publish it as a public meeting, but we wouldn't have to have, you know, the public could have an opportunity to come. But as long as we did it in the advance of, what, forty-eight-hour window, so, I mean, if we finished up and we wanted to pull that date up, we could.
Oh, I see, yeah. We could, absolutely.
Yeah. That get us, all right. You ready for the praise, present?
I am.
Can we get the readers' digest first?
We can, sure.
Good. I'd prefer to Cliff Notes. Do they even exist anymore?
I hope so. I use that phrase all the time, so, try not to show my age, you know. All right, well, let's talk about the, the budget highlights here. First of all, let's kinda review. We had some big stuff come up during the course of the year, two hurricanes, we had a couple of police situations, we added the tag office, a lot of things came up, we had about three-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars worth of budget amendments. Now, we had anticipated using... We had anticipated using about $250,000 of our reserve this year. We're going to wind up using more than that with the additional budget amendment. So that kind of put us in the hold start for next year's budget. Some of the hurdles we have to clear this year. Year four of the employee salary study, the mandatory increased retirement. We'll talk more about those in a second. Of course, our new streetscape commitment. So you add all that up to where the deficit is, that puts us a pretty good number to get back to zero for the year. So let's dig into more of this. We have increased employee payroll over the last three years by a substantial number, as you can see. Salary has gone up about $600,000. Total payroll, that's health insurance, FICA, retirement, all that's gone up about $930,000. And we have added a couple of positions, but that is mostly from pay raises for our existing employees. Average employee has gotten a $3,700 pay raise over the last three years, which is pretty good.
Is this, this next budget, the last year of the pay raises?
Yes. Yeah. Talk about that in a minute here. So let's look at the cost and benefit of increased payroll. Of course, that's a big number. $930,000 is almost six cents of property tax. That's a big number. And of course, we strive to be good stewards of taxpayer money despite what they say about us on Facebook. We do strive to be good stewards of the taxpayer money. Most large organizations' payroll is the biggest expense. We have a lot of one- and two- and three-person departments. It's really hard to reduce staff in a one- or two-person department and continue to do that service. On the other side, over 80% of our employees live here in the county. They spend that money locally. They go to lunch, shop, charitable donations. I know many of you heard me say, Irwin, Tennessee, where my dad lives, they lost their CSX train station about two years ago. 200 and some jobs with $125,000 annual salary. Every church in the county is begging for money right now because your big donors all got laid off and they're not big donors anymore. So that's an important part of the local economy. Of course, reducing turnover, the opportunity cost of hiring a new person is much more than the $3,700 that we've raised pay on. And credentialed folks are the hardest to hire and retain. Paramedics, social workers, and uniformed law enforcement. We've turned over several social, we've had several social workers particularly leave this year and go to other counties and make more money. Sometimes it was a family, they moved way away for some other situation, and some of them moved next door. The hit this year to finish outs, about $190,000, that's everything, FICA, everything like that. About 1.2 cents. And of course, that is, that will complete the four years. But Ash and Surrey, Wilks too, are all, they're in the process now. They're raising pay, so we are starting to lose some folks to surrounding counties. So it's a never-ending battle, unfortunately, so. Let's say, the last phase of any economic recovery is upward pressure on wages. And that's where we are now. Everybody, pretty much everybody's gotten a raise in every line of work for the, in general, the last two or three years. Eventually, wages will go up so high, that'll be one of the pressures that causes the next recession. But that's a few years down the road. That's the last part of any economic recovery. The increased retirement contributions. Right now, there's about $320,000, $320,000 state retirees. That's expected to go up $150,000 more in the next 10 years. We've all heard the term, the silver tsunami, the aging of the population. Folks are living longer. Bob Day, what that is, Bob Day was the man that taught school with my dad in the next classroom over for years and years and years. Bob graduated college at 22, started teaching, taught 28 years. He had two years of sick time built up. He was like 50 years and three months old when he retired. He celebrated his 95th birthday last week. He's been drawing retirement for 45 years after working for 28 years. Now, God bless him. That is, I don't wish him any ill will whatsoever, but that is not a sustainable model. So the founding fathers never envisioned people living to be 90, 95, 100 years old. The reason social security age was set at 65 when it was set back in the 30s was that was the average age at the time. The average life expectancy was 65. That's why they set it at 65, so. North Carolina does have one of the top five best-funded pension. We're in the high 90s, probably 95, 96% funded. So we're one of the best, but we're still underfunded. So that contribution's going up substantially each of the next four years by about the same amount, about $65,000. Each year goes up a little bit more because it's on a higher wage, so it'll be more like $70,000 next year and so on. This year's, it says $65,000. So equipment, we've been continually upgrading equipment the last few years. We're hopefully going to buy two county vehicles, four sheriff's vehicles, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about patrol vehicles in a minute. Equipment for the sheriff's office, laundry system for the jail, dispatch equipment for a second seat. We'll talk more about that in a minute. Various other stuff, about $390,000, which we just paid cash. We could bump up taxes another 2.5 cents, take care of it, but we're going to borrow that money to ease the hit on this year's budget. So why does it cost so much to provide essential county services? So let's, one example is a sheriff deputy patrol car. They patrol about 240 miles a day. That's over, well over 80,000 miles a year. That gives you about a two-year life expectancy on a patrol car. And it costs about $42,000 with everything, lights, sirens, cage, radio, all that stuff. So the annual cost is, say, 42 divided 21,000, you're going to look at four sets of tires, four sets of brakes, 17 oil changes in a year, so on. Patrol deputy salary, you're looking at basically half a penny per patrol deputy per year. And it's just very expensive to operate county budget, county government, unfortunately. That's just one example. I would love to double our staff of patrol deputies, but we'll worry about that in some future year, not this year. Okay. Of course, we do want to keep our tax low. We're currently at 54.75. That's the 20th lowest or the 80th highest, however you want to look at it. State median and state average, you see, are the high 60s. We mentioned earlier, 89 out of 100 counties have a fire tax on top of that 67 or 69 cents. And they range from 1.7 cents to 16 cents. Most range from 5 to 10 cents. Look at our, what I consider our five neighbors, Wilk, Surrey, Yadkin, Ash, and Stokes counties. You see, the average of those five counties is a 60-cent property tax rate, 7.5 cents in fire tax. Puts them at almost 68 cents, and we're at 54.75 right now. So we're 13 cents lower than those on average. Being a small county, we face several revenue challenges, right? There's only two sides to the equation. You've got revenue, you've got expenditures. There's only, there's only two ways to attack the budget. So we've got a lot of challenges on revenue. First challenge we face is our present use. 65% of our land is classified as present use in active agricultural or horticultural production. The average county in North Carolina, that's 18%. Ash has 12, Wilks has 30. We're at 65%. So all the farmland in the county is valued at about $550 million. Were it not for present use, that would be $3 million worth of property tax revenue. But of course, farmers get a substantial reduction on their property tax. They only actually pay $586,000. So it's $2.4 million that is from, we lose from present use exemption. I'm stating a fact here. I'm not saying this is right or this is wrong, it's just, that's a fact. So that's about 15 cents of property tax. Second challenge is our small tax base. At 1.6 billion, we have the sixth lowest real estate assessment in the state, so one penny of tax doesn't go very far. Penny for us is $165,000. You know, Ash, a penny is $400,000. We're getting ready to buy an ambulance, $155,000. It costs the same for Ash, and it's only half, it's less than half a cent for them. It's almost a whole penny of tax for us. Sales tax challenge, at $800,000, we have the eighth smallest amount of locally collected sales tax. This is one that's positive. We're doing better. We're growing at 10% per year the last two years, double the state average, thanks to authentically Allegheny and some other things. We actually moved up one spot this year, but still, we're way behind our neighbors, way below our neighbors. The town of Blowing Rock collects almost, they collect like $780,000 in sales tax, almost as much as we do for the whole year. It's just amazing. This one makes me cry, the sales tax challenge, part two. Our three surrounding counties that we border all have the additional quarter cent sales tax, and that's how much they collect from it. Ash gets $650,000, Wilks $1.5 million, Surrey $2.2 million. Our sales tax is growing so fast, it'd be almost $200,000 we could collect if we could get that enacted. So that would be about 1.2 cents of property tax. So some of the challenges that we face. The other is the fund balance challenge. We've been spending down our fund balance a little the last couple of years. We're at about 18% right now. Where statutorily is allowed to go at 8.33% one month, basically. If you do that, it's somebody else's problem. I'll be dead of a heart attack long before we get that low, so it'll be in the next county manager's problem. Wilks has 41%, Ash is at 28. I'd like to get us back to 25%. I prepared this budget hoping, expecting $150,000, $200,000 surplus, basically, to add back to the fund balance this year. Of course, our revenue is about 55% as property tax. The new budget would hope about 10 million. Our sales taxes, of course, grants and reimbursements, most of that is social services reimbursements with some other things. Fees for services, so it's about an $18.2 million budget in revenue. So our revenue's increasing about 10% hopefully this year, less of it coming from reserve. So our revenue assumptions, 3.5% increase in local sales tax revenue. I know we're growing at 10% the last two years. I did not have the intestinal fortitude to project 10% again next year, although I'm hoping that's going to happen again. But 3.5%. 4% increase in our state portion, which the, that is the County Commissioners Association estimates 4.5%. So I went a little bit below that. That's $65,000. 4.95, 4.95 cents increase in the property tax rate to generate $790,000. Average of 13.5 state inmates housed. No revenue from the sale of real property, as we talked about earlier. We've about sold it all. And we do have some excess vehicles to sell. Hopefully, it'll be more like $15,000, but I'm going to project $5,000 for that. If we enacted this tax increase, we would still be the 31st lowest tax, but we would move from 20th to 31st. So our average tax bill, $665. This would be a 9% increase, about $60. Make our new average tax bill $725. I have a copy of the handout of this presentation for you all as well. Go back to our five neighbors we talked about there. We'll assume they, none of them raised taxes or fire taxes at all. We're still going to be eight and change cents lower than the average of those five neighboring counties. Again, because somebody else has higher taxes, that's not automatically a reason we should raise taxes. But it's still, we're going to be a bargain compared to all of the surrounding counties. So where does the money go? We started out at $20.7 million of budget request. There was rumor about a 3.3 and a half million dollar budget hole out there earlier, you know? Budget, we always start about $2 million, $2.5 million more in expenditures than we do revenue. There's nothing unusual about that. It was a little higher this year, no big deal. We trimmed the budget down to $18.3 million. That's about 4% above last year's July 1st budget, about 2% above our revised budget with the budget amendments we talked about. So we removed about, almost $2.5 million. So the original budget request was for 10 new positions, nine of them full-time. Two grant-funded crimes victims advocates, two additional school resource officers, two additional dispatchers, three in social services, and one part-time finance position. That was the original request. So what did we do with those requests? Well, the grant-funded crimes victim advocate, that's 100% funded, health insurance, retirement, everything. So keeping them in, taking them out does not affect the budget either way. We might as well leave them in. The two additional school resource officers, we did, I do have those in the budget, so that would be an SRO at every school. We'll talk more about that in a minute. We anticipate $60,000 in grants to pay almost half the cost. Talk a little bit more about that in a second. The two additional dispatchers, we removed from the budget. The sheriff and I are working on a plan to pay for that and add that later on or maybe next year, but so we did take those out. The three social services positions, basically, we're adding one and a half. We'll add one July 1st and add one January 1st, so that'll take half of the costs out. And then the part-time finance position was removed. We're cross-training some other county employees to assist in that with, when they have some extra time. So that's where we are at this point. School resource officers, biggest thing, the school system has to apply for the grant, it's not us. I'm confident they will do that. They've given me their word. That was a common campaign theme last fall. Three of you were running for office. That was, that was a common campaign theme. So we do have four school resource officers in the budget for next year. Some of the things we did remove, we cut the public assistance request substantially. We cut the school board request substantially, although we're still giving them the same amount of money we gave them last year. They just asked for substantially more. We anticipate lower maintenance budget because of our new roof and HVAC at the BDC. We expect that. Inmate medical was reduced. At the time we started the budget, we had an inmate medical situation we're all aware of. It's turned out to be not as bad as we expected, so we were able to take that back down from the original request. That wasn't the sheriff making an outrageous request. That was just, this was back in February or March, and we, you know, things, situation's changed there. Boarding of prisoners, we talked about that. We really spiked in females back around February or March. That's been trending down. Hopefully, that'll continue, so we reduced, not from this year's number, but reduced from the original budget request by 20,000. Slash traveling and continuing ed budget across the board, and we ended the contract with our insurance consultant as well to save $15,000. So didn't have room to get all the departments up there. These are the non-payroll costs in the, all these various departments. Here's this year, here's next year. If you take out payroll, almost everybody's budget is flat or down, although all of them combined, it's $45,000 reduction in the non-payroll costs over last year. We're running as tight a ship as we possibly can. We are, you know, Wilk Community College, of course, one of our big investments. They're continuing to grow from 106 to 165 students. Dual enrollment is continuing to grow. Number of classes is way up. That's almost doubled in two years. Continuing ed classes continuing to go up, so things are doing well. I don't know if any of you have been in the basement lately. They have taken out the CNC machines and added plumbing, HVAC, electrical, things like that. So those classes are there. Largest program right now is criminal justice, actually, at our, at the Allegheny Center. That's been the most popular. Adding more criminal justice and business classes as well, and of course, all the construction classes going on in the basement. Those start in July. Working on the stormwater project there on the hill. Working, of course, new roof, HVAC. We fund Wilk's Community College at about $195,000. That is a $29,000 increase. Ash County funds them at about $850,000 by comparison. Public school funding, one of the big parts of that is our debt. We have about $4 million in school debt outstanding, $713,000 annual payment. That's about 4.3 cents. In addition, we have an appropriation to the school of about $2.6 million. That's about 16 cents of property tax. We're funding them equal to last year. They will not be reimbursing us for the SRO anymore, so we're just going to watch that. But good news is, enrollment in the school is up two years in a row, so that's good. That's very good news, so. Most small counties, that is not the case, where school enrollment is growing, so that's positive news for us. Of course, DSS, a big part of our budget. About half our, about half of the social services budget is reimbursed, so it's not too big of a hit, as it turns out. But it's still well over $1 million in hit for the, for human services. Law enforcement, we're expecting over $500,000 in grants this year, and we're also working on some other revenue prop situations. And of course, we're still waiting on our $190,000 of drug money to be released any day now. It's been any day now for the last year. We talked a little bit about this earlier, some of our special appropriations. The library asked for a small increase. The health department was on a three-year ramp-up of their allotment to get them back out of, from using all their fund balance, kind of what we were doing with our budget. Council on Aging asked for a small increase. In addition, of course, we're constructing the new building for them. This next slide is what I call the Alamo budget. So how can we avoid a tax increase? So we'd have to find $790,000 worth of additional cuts. So if we cancel the employee raises, do not add the new positions. I said the grant-funded positions, we would still add. $200,000 reduction to the schools, it'll be about 7.5%. Reduce the public assistance back to last year's level. We have a $50,000 contingency line item. We could eliminate that. Furlough all the county employees for a week. Eliminate our proposed surplus of $150,000. That gets us a 782, that's pretty much there. I think we could find $100 in everybody's supply line or something in addition. I think we could find $100 in everybody's supply line or something in addition there. So if we want to have an Alamo budget, that's, it would look something like that. I don't recommend we do that, but I did want to present that as an alternative out there, so. One note on the transfer station. We, I talked a lot at this presentation last year about our plans to move to commingled recycling, upgrade our recycling, things like that. That's on hold right now. You see, a lot of our neighbors have stopped taking recycling right now because there's no place to sell it. So right now, we are paying zero for our recycling. We are going to keep that status quo for right now until this market disturbance hopefully passes. So we're not going to do that. We did have almost a $400,000 accounting hit to the transfer station budget for retiring, which I still don't understand. I don't know how we've had that many people retire from the transfer station, but we're going to have to go up on the annual fee this year to $98 to, to balance the books in the transfer station. We're going to have a budget amendment on the transfer station at our next meeting as well. So that is the Cliff's Notes version, the short version there, so. For next year, in 2021, we, you know, we've got a lot of our building maintenance has been updated. We need the HVAC in this building, and the courthouse was put in at the same time. We're approaching 15 years. It's not necessarily for next year, but sometime in the next few years, we're going to need HVAC improvements at these two buildings. Got several parking lots that need to be resurfaced. Continue purchasing sheriff's vehicles. Medicaid transformation is a big unknown, and recycling's a question mark right now as well, so. And who knows what else is going to be out there, so. All right. So that is it for the short version there, so.
Yeah.
I didn't see the, the dispersment for what we promised Piney Creek. Was that left out of the budget?
That was, I, I submitted, I mean, it was what they requested. We, we, they requested an amount, and that's what's in the budget, so.
I understand that they met their goal, and they've got their money now, so at least that saved us 25,000.
Hopefully, we'll see that one, we get to it on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Mike, I think a good thing to keep in mind, too, is the request that we had earlier about courthouse and what we could have spent there to solve that, you know, somewhere between $4 and $12 million. We're addressing that for pennies of that, so.
Oh, it's going to be a fun time.
Always.
Thank you. Good presentation. I guess. If I got any tums.
You know, we did, this was scheduled to be given at 2010. Why are we getting to it now?
What a challenge. It's a lot of work to do. We'll try to look forward to it.
Do we have a copy of that yet, Mike?
Presentation.
Any hesitation there? I would encourage us as a board to go back and review all of last year's or this year's budget amendments and the areas they were in, and let's try to roll up our sleeves in those areas and make sure we're, it's hard to get everything. Unexpected things are going to happen, but let's, let's try to work together and kind of reduce those budget amendments when we get done with the next budget for the next year, or try to. Any other comments on the budget? Good.
Use your weapons and wire your folks.
Go home and study up on it, and we'll meet back regarding that on June, let's see, May 23 will be the first meeting. All right, where the public comments? Anybody left that's still got air in them? Come on, Jeff.
They got a comment. You waiting this long?
Jeff Smith, I'm with Sparta Lights, and the reason I stayed this long, I want to catch those 14 people that John said we had watching tonight. We're getting close to our June 15 drawdown for Sparta Lights, and, and just to get the word out, in case somebody's missed it, we're selling tickets, $50, chance to win, 3,000. That includes a meal for two. We have a good time, June 15, 6 o'clock at, at the elementary cafeteria. So I hope everybody can make it. You can buy tickets at JB's Pizza, or you can get them at the Cablevision office, or call 372-2408, and I'll even deliver them. If you got a problem coming on June 15, let me know. I'll even pick you up. Somehow, one way or the other, we'll make it work.
Can you deliver a pizza along with that?
Well, we haven't started that yet, but it may come to that. But the handout I was passing out tonight, Pumpkin Festival. This is a new thing on October the 29th. It'll be in Kraus Park. And Sarah Dalton, Authentic Allegheny, brought this up several months back. They've talked about a pumpkin festival for, I don't know how many years, but anyway, nothing ever happened. And she wanted to get something started, and she made this brochure for us that they, they passed out at Merle Fest, and it does say on it, it benefits Sparta Lights and Entertainment, and it does and it doesn't. To give you a little briefing about how this thing is going to work, when she came to us, we was trying to figure out how to make it a little bit different. So this is for kids, 12 and under. We'll have food and whatnot for the adults, but the main thing that's going to happen on the 29th, what we want to do, working with the sheriff's department to where we can ID the kids. So we're going to take the thumbprint, ID them, and that way, they'll, the sheriff will have it in a database, the parent, whatever. So something around the holiday times that may be good for the, for the child, but it's all geared to them. That afternoon, we'll have rides, games, paint some pumpkins, give them a pumpkin, some food and whatnot. Anyway, it's, it's all focused on the kids. I don't pay a whole lot of attention and don't participate in, in social media, but I do watch it, and that's one thing that we seen, a lot of people was always complaining about there wasn't something for the kids to do. So this is their day. Now, where Sparta Lights, the benefit situation, this comes into play, is we reached out to the high school kids about decorating Kraus Park for Christmas. And there's a group of kids that came up, want to do the 12 Days of Christmas. They're going to decorate the park. They're going to help raise their own money. So all the benefits, if any, that, that come out of the Pumpkin Festival will go to the high school kids for them to do part of, of the light project in Kraus Park. And if you were by there today, we started grading for the permanent placement of Santa's House beside the farmer's market, and the little garage building down there, cleaning out around it to give back a little bit to the community. We agreed to put the roof on the building and paint the building and spruce it up a little bit, and that's where we'll be storing our, our Christmas scenes during the off year. So anyway, stop the rumor mill. Everybody knows now what, those 14 people know what's going on. Appreciate it. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move along to county manager comments.
Yes, I've got the transfer facility report. Last time they were here, I think they picked the day after the windiest day we'd ever had in the history of the world, and we had some wind-blown trash and a few things. So this was the follow-up report. Everything has been corrected there, so all is right in the world again at the, on the transfer station inspection. Our landfill methane report, everything's in line there as well, so I know we all await that report with baby breath every quarter, so everything's good there. Our liability and workers' comp claim reports, again, we're, we're, nothing to be alarmed about there, just informational for the commissioners and the citizens. And the VIA Health, their quarterly financial report is here as well, so.
When do we have to make a decision on a change with VIA?
I'm not aware of any drop-dead date at this point, so.
I mean, we could have a year, we could have two years.
Yeah, I mean, the, the tailored plans don't go into effect until June of 2021, so we've got time, you know? There's nothing preventing us from doing it today, but there's no, there's no time crunch on it, so. Final thing I've got is the building permit report. Eight new homes were permitted this month, so that are, that would be in April, so that's certainly good news. If we could have eight every month, that would really help with our tax base, so $2 million worth of homes being permitted. Couple of other things. Social Services had an audit from the state with their special assistance line item. Had 100% score. You can't do any better than that. So I want to say thanks to Dana Johnson. She, that's her area. She's an income maintenance caseworker with us, been with us for 14 years, so way to go, Dana. Ribbon cutting Friday at 3 o'clock for the new improvements at the fairgrounds. They'll be in front of the concession stand and the restroom area there. Thursday at 2 o'clock is our meeting, our one-on-one meetings with VIA and with partners for them to make their presentation. That's Thursday at 2:00. So hopefully, you all can make it there as well. And finally, want to remind everybody, June the 7th and 8th, that weekend is one of the biggest weekends we've ever had in the county. We've got the Fiber Fest going on that weekend, which I know, we had a booth at, at Merle Fest giving away county information, and the cards on Fiber Fest were, you know, three to one more popular than any of the other items that we had to give away, so that was a big hit. We also have Music on Main that Friday night as well. Bark in the Park from that Save a Pet has is that Saturday, and there's extreme midget wrestling at the Blue Ridge Grill that Friday night as well. Not just midget wrestling, but extreme midget wrestling. So if, no matter what kind of entertainment you like, it is there on the weekend of June 7th and 8th. So we expect a big weekend. Town will be full, so it should be a great time for all. We're going to have some shuttle bus services with Allegheny in Motion on Friday between the, the Fiber Fest and the Music on Main. Tiffany and I are meeting with the Music on Main folks later this week to iron that out, but we'll have some shuttle services available that night as well. And that is all I have. How do you top extreme midget wrestling?
We booked into the budget session.
You don't qualify.
It may be the budget session.
All right, we'll move along to county commissioner comments, and I'll start to my immediate left with Commissioner Larry, I mean, Larry Prince. Sorry about that, Larry. It's getting late.
I wish you all a good night.
We're going to promote him to Larry King. From Larry Prince to Larry King.
Well, I'll start off with an apology. You probably won't hear that from a politician very often, but I feel that I owe you one. I said whenever I took this position that I would do my due diligence and look into everything and make sure that my votes were based on facts. Unfortunately, on the 22nd of April, I couldn't depend on anything. We were given figures on the 22nd of April for Streetscape, five minutes before the meeting began. Later, whenever I was able to go into the figures, I found that the figures were based on three different assumptions. Now, if given the opportunity to vote again on Streetscape, it would be a positive, but I do not like being rushed on decisions, and especially whenever I find out later that the figures are somewhat ambiguous. We were told that the county would look at a figure of $432,000 for a term of 15 years, a rate of 2.5% with an annual debt service of $34,572. I thought the county was borrowing the money. No, Town of Sparta is, we're going to guarantee it. Now fortunately, we had an additional grant which has reduced that to $350,000, and the figure that the county is going to be responsible for is being reduced. Now, I've requested some input on the memorandum of understanding. It did not pass. Hopefully, whenever the memorandum of understanding gets to us, because we have to approve it, I can assure you that I will look at it very closely. But again, I apologize that I did not do the due diligence, but I did the best I could in the five minutes that I had, and I can assure you, I've made a few people's life miserable as I have to do, gone through these figures and seen that there are three different assumptions in the figures on the page that we were given. So Streetscape, I hope to God that it goes through the way that we project and we plan. And as I said, if hey, if I was given the opportunity to vote for it again, I would because this is a minimal investment from the county in the future of Sparta. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just a quick, quick thing about our agenda. Last year, 18 months ago, we went to a consent agenda, and that speeded up things. But I, I would like for a conversation with, with Mike and the board about a different approach to part of the agenda where you would have for future action, for action, and then in an emergency case, you would have a fast track. For future action, you would have all the information provided to you to give us at least two weeks to research a project. In our next meeting, it could be moved to action for a vote. Now, we get a lot of information, and we're asked to vote on something with being able to look at it with 10 or 15, 20 minutes notice. After I vote on something, I can think of a lot of questions I would like to ask. If I've had a couple of weeks to look at this information, those questions could come out. It would not slow the process down. It would just give it some order, I think, and it's just something for us to talk about. I'm not saying do it, and I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just looking at a way to streamline some of the process and to get more information where we can ask Mike, Donna, or whoever, some, some questions. And if somebody is going to come to us with a PowerPoint, they should give us the PowerPoint in writing, just like you did tonight, but give us, to us while you're presenting the program, so we can make notes on that and ask questions. I think anybody that comes before the board and asks for money, they should have a PowerPoint or some information that's written down that can be given to the commissioners. I echo what John said on the Streetscape. Everybody knows, I thought it was a rush job. I think we should have had more time to study that program. I think with this project for future action, action, that would slow that down. Now, if there's an emergency, you can always go to what's called a fast track. We have a storm and buildings get blown away or washed away, then you can do, you can override action and for action, for future action. So I, just something to, to think about.
That's it. Thank you.
Don't have much to say. Just like to say it's been a productive meeting, and I'm glad we moved forward with the Duncan Recreational Pool to do a little add-on up there for the kids and, and the fire taxes, something that really needs to be put out there and, and put emphasis on explaining this thing thoroughly to the, every district, either here or out there, either way it goes. But it really needs explained very thoroughly so everybody understands that, and that would be a good thing and a fire thing because that tax hits everybody, and the way it is on your drives and donations, you have basically a fourth of the people don't give. They get the same service everybody else gets. And I think the fire tax would be a good fire thing, but it's, it's going to have to have some work to put it out there. Thank you.
Thank you, and I, I would like to add to that and just encourage the public to, fire tax or anything, come, don't, don't hesitate to come. We want to talk, and we want to hear from. from you, try to, you know, make sure we're on the same page and, same understanding, and Mike's office, he's here a lot, of course, he's had a lot of meetings, too, so come to Mike, come to the meetings, come, you know, don't ever hesitate, if you've got questions on anything we're doing, we'll do our best to try to communicate with you best we can. At this time, we are being asked to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318 dot 11 dot A3 to consult with attorney-client privileges, we'll put it that way, so a whole lot more read there, but would entertain a motion for that?
I'm going to ask the motion to invite Karen and Josh as well.
Yeah, we do want to include Karen and Josh to come into that. Who made, you make a motion?
Yeah, whatever.
My second.
All right. All in favor, make a motion, say an aye.
Aye.